Good evening. This is another regular city commission meeting. Today's January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is four thirty-one. I call this meeting to order. Let's begin with a roll call, please.
Mayor Stephen B. Grant. Is absent. Vice Mayor Type and Sargent.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Mic on? He's present.
Is Commissioner? Okay. Commissioner Woodrow L. Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus. Commissioner Romulus? Okay. Vice Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the closed-door session. May I have a motion to recess?
Uh, Vice Mayor, let me just indicate for maybe members of the public who have signed in to watch at this particular point, the city commission is going to meet in a closed-door session pursuant to section two eighty-six point oh one one eight Florida statutes, which allows the commission to meet in closed door to discuss settlement options and other issues related to pending litigation. Pending litigation in this matter is the city of Boynton Beach as plaintiff and J K M BTS Capital LLC is the defendant. In attendance at the closed-door session will be the members of the city commission, both present now and those that join a few minutes late if they go directly to the conference room where we're 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 going to recess to. The city manager, myself and a court reporter who will transcribe a record of that proceeding. When we're done, sixty minutes from now or less, we will return to the commission chambers and resume the regular city commission meeting. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairops. We have a motion to recess. We have a motion and a second. We will return at approximately five thirty.
Approximately five thirty.
All right. Thank you. Uh, after our closed closed-door session, Yuri will provide us with an introduction.
Hello and welcome. My name is Yuri Konikov, and I will be providing assistance to the mayor and elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can participate by using the GoToWebinar interface. The first way is by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. The second way is by clicking on the raise hand icon indicating that they wish to speak. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker at the appropriate time and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. The speaker should minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during their allotted time. I will now turn over control to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, Yuri. Uh, I would request everyone rise for an invocation by Pastor Emily Ash of the First Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Hay.
Thank you. Merciful God, as we gather together, may your spirit hover over this room and over our country. Infuse in our local and national leaders the wisdom, the courage, and compassion to lead us during these challenging times of great loss and great division. Give us all a sense of hope in the future for our neighborhood, our city, and our country, and give us all a new purpose in learning to live together in peace. And Lord, hear our prayers, for we trust in you. We pray all this in faith. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I know normally we do a roll call now, but um, a clerk, I want to make sure that you have the people in attendance of myself, um, and that Commissioner Katz uh is away and he will be on soon.
Would you like me to do another roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mayor Stephen B. Grant?
Here.
Vice Mayor Type and Sargent?
Here.
Commissioner Justin Katz is away from the dais. Commissioner Woodrow L. Hay?
Yeah.
Is away from the dais. Commissioner Christina Romulus?
Presley.
Okay, I see Commissioner Hay. Thank you. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. All right, moving on to additions, deletions, and corrections. Um, the I believe we have an addition for legal, uh, a new item for requesting a private attorney-client session of the city commission to discuss pending litigation in the following case, Brenda Brissette versus the city of Boynton Beach. And we'll put that under legal. In addition, I'd like to move up uh aspects of the city manager's report to announcements, community, and special events presentation. So I'd like to have nine A, B, and C uh before public audience. And if seeing no any additions, deletions, or corrections, may have a motion to approve as amended.
Uh, Mayor, may I make an addition?
Yes.
Um, I'd like for us to consider as a commission and broadly as a city organization, perhaps a day of service where we contribute to Feeding South Florida. As you know, their community kitchen has finished construction, and they're looking for volunteers to package food and and prepare the materials. So um, if there is interest, I would love to have a conversation to see if we can each invite ten of our neighbors and and city staff and uh have a day of service.
You want to put that on future agenda item?
Um, it's possible. Yeah, it's fine with paper. Yeah.
And then um, and thank you. I almost forgot something that I did want to discuss with the the city commission, whether we do it at this meeting or the the next, is in regards to our community policing initiative. Um, in regards to the the aspects of, you know, where do we send our officers when we we feel like there's a, whether it be a peaceful protest or a large gathering? What is the the current protocols are in place? Because I think we need to have that conversation. Do we need to fund more overtime work for our officers? Because I want to make sure that our police are proactive in deterring crime, not necessarily just reactive. And so I'm I would like to put that on the future agenda item so that we have a an updated conversation on community policing and how it needs to be a little bit more proactive when there's large gatherings.
Okay.
Good to know.
All right. So moving forward, may I have a motion to approve as amended?
So move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to informational items by members of the city commission. Uh, Commissioner Hay, would you like to begin?
I have no disclosures at the same.
Right. Commissioner Romulus?
Chair, I have, or Mayor, I have no disclosures at the moment. Um, belated happy Martin Luther King's Day, Junior's Day to everyone. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I see that the legacy item is on this agenda, and so I want to disclose again, as I did in the CRA meeting. I've spoken to um, Mr. Skaggs, uh, Mr. Jim Knight. Um, let me see what else here requires disclosure regarding eleven A, that's the sale of eleven oh two and eleven-ten on North Federal Highway. I spoke to uh, Mr. Sam Rounatinsky. And that's it, Mayor. Okay.
Thank you. Um, as for myself, um, I remember seeing the January sixth coup on the Capitol Building. Um, it's an aspect of democracy that we don't like to see, but it's something that we have to realize that that was reality, that people did not want to see our elections move forward in our own country. Um, I have been noticed that, you know, any of the government officials, whether it be city, county, state, to to be on lookout for tomorrow. Um, but this is something that makes us stronger. It does not make us weaker. Uh, this is a learning, it's something that we can teach our youth. This is why we fight for the way we fight, so that we have the aspect of democracy and self-determination for ourselves, and that I look forward to the federal government prosecuting any of those who are involved in that coup. Um, on January seventh, uh, I attended the city's uh Parks and Recreation Department's Crowns and Swords event over at our amphitheater. Um, it was my first time fencing, and it was very exhilarating. It's, you know, you know, because it's it's definitely metal, and so when you get hit in the head, it it sounds like it. Um, and I was able to play four-way chess for the first time. Uh, on January thirteenth, I was able to be here for the chambers to award the MLK uh recipients uh for the different uh awards that we have, and I believe we have a presentation on that. On January fourteenth, I had uh lunch on the hill. Uh, I went to the Cherry Hill Mini Market Kitchen uh and had my meeting with the mayor. Um, I think we uh, the marketing department is doing a great job with the newsletter, and so I'd ask the the commission, whatever you can do to get that out to the public and have them sign up for it. Uh, it is one of the best ways to find out what's going on on a a weekly basis. Um, in addition, uh, I was able to accept uh electronic donations from uh an individual in Boynton Beach, and uh I'll be working on uh an aspect of ending the digital divide, where we are, I'm working with the Chevy D TV Foundation for Screens for Success in increasing digital equity and awareness in our community. Uh, that evening, I attended the the Cultural Council Virtual Muse Awards, where our own Boynton Beach Arts District, Rolando Chang Barero, received uh award. And then uh, this past Sunday, I went out on a charter hammer time to go fishing in the area and to the ocean right outside. And one of the things he told me is that it's not the, it's not like it once, what it once was. There's not as much fish, and there's more people fishing. Um, and so it's just something that echoes clear of what how we need to make sure we as a commission for city of Boynton Beach are doing what we can for the environment. Um, I did speak with the the Shafers, which I believe is item eight D. Um, I'll re uh state of everyone that I spoke to in regards to the legacy as of last meeting. And um, and the last information is that Publix is, I believe, Thursday morning is accepting uh vaccine appointments. Um, I know that a lot of people are frustrated that they have not been able to secure appointments, and they hear other people have. Um, the way I I I give the analogy is that it's kind of like landing, you know, flying, and after you land, you want to get out of that door as soon as possible. And that's kind of like, we we have the vaccine, everyone's going to get their turn, we we just have to be patient. And uh, you know, it's it's first come, first served. So if you're over sixty-five, you get first serve.
Why you look at me?
And that's it for me. Yes.
Uh, do we know if it's certain Publix, all Publix? What do we know about that?
Um, I believe we'll we'll se- send out uh some email, uh, social media reports of the the website. I believe that Palm Beach um healthcare, you know, the Department of Health for Palm Beach County also has appointment availabilities through a form that I have posted on my Facebook page. So there are ways for people over sixty-five to get uh that vaccine. It's just, there's only so many people that can get it at a time, and it's, I underst- and I I'm excited to get wait my turn to get it as well.
I I believe that we are going to be posting that on our webpage also. So just keep looking on the city's webpage as well as the uh, as the counter.
Correct.
And there, if I if I may, uh, I I'm excited about uh where I see uh our country headed. Uh, as of tomorrow, uh, we will uh be able to get back on track uh with a few things that 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 I believe in all my life. So I'm uh happy about uh where we're headed, and I'm proud of Boynton Beach as far as how we have handled these situations uh over over the past. Uh, we have been a model city uh to some degree uh when it uh comes to uh disrupting out and tearing up and burning and fighting out our city. Uh, we have a lot of good citizen group. We have a good police department, and we have a good relationship uh amongst um many of the people here. So uh, let's just keep going in the right right direction.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to announce that I am in attendance. I have no disclosures other than to welcome school board members Eric Whitfield and Dr. Robinson, who I noted are in attendance. Thank you. Thank you. And that goes into our first announcement, which will be uh Ms. Erica Whitfield of the Palm Beach County School Board Member will present a state of education report. Uh, is there a slideshow that goes with this? Guess not. All right, so let's.
Can you hear me?
Can. Yes, we can.
Okay, do you um need an a visual as well, or is it um just like this?
Um, I don't know if you have the option for your your video screen, so.
No problem. I'm happy to just talk. I just wanted to um make sure I was doing it the right, the way you guys normally do. Um, well, first of all, let me just say thank you so much for having me. Um, I'm Erica Whitfield from your school board. Um, Happy New Year, Happy MLK Day, and um, thank you so much to the mayor, vice mayor, and commissioners for um allowing me to come speak to you today. As you know, I'm one of your um school board members for Boynton Beach, and every year I try to come and do a little state of education uh report to the city, just to to keep the lines of communication open um between all of us and give you an opportunity to learn a little bit more about your schools and to ask any questions that you have. Um, uh, it is my understanding from what Commissioner Katz just said, that Dr. Robinson is also with us, and so I'd love to have a moment for her to speak um when I'm uh get to the end of uh my prepared presentation, and if maybe she has any comments for y'all, that would be wonderful at that time as well. So I just want to um talk to you briefly today. I want to talk a little bit about um what's been going on with our distance and brick and mortar enrollment and for our schools. I want to talk a little bit about how we've been dealing with technology during this time in our digital classrooms, um, a a little bit about how our testing has been going on right now. We're talking about our diagnostics, and then students going back to brick and mortar. Um, I'm going to mention really briefly about hunger in the community and then some action steps that we might have. So the first thing I want to say is that we have a quite a big difference between our students who are attending in person and those who are attending uh virtually. We made that option available when we went and back to school, that students had the opportunity if they wanted. Um, at first, we insisted that they be virtual, and then after that, they had the opportunity to either come in person or stay virtual. Um, what we've noticed pretty much across the board is that our high school and middle school students are more likely to stay home. They're the ones that are really, really there. So for Congress Middle, seventy percent of your students are participating virtually right now, and at Boynton Beach High, seventy-four point eight, so seventy-five percent of your students are participating virtually at this moment. Um, with your elementary schools, pretty much forty, fifty percent across the board are participating virtually. So what does that mean? Um, it's a big difficulty for our students when they're participating virtually. First, um, they have to have a computer. So your school board did an amazing job, in my opinion, um, figuring out a way to get everybody a computer this year. At your schools right now, Boynton Beach High has a hundred and twelve percent of their students have um a computer available to them and have been given out to them. Congress Middle is at ninety-eight percent, Rolling Green, a hundred and eight, a hundred and fifty-one percent at Point Sienna. So as you go through the schools, you'll see that we have in most cases more than enough computers for each student that is there. So that means we have some on campus, um, but many have been sent home with the students. Every student should have one, and then in addition, some of them may need a way to get onto the internet when they get home. So um, we've been giving out Comcast subscriptions and T-Mobile hotspots. Um, the T-Mobile hotspots are a little better for a family that may not be interested in having um, in having their name associated with the account and with a Comcast subscription. Sometimes people get a little nervous about that. So if they don't want to be identified, we give out a T-Mobile hotspot or a Comcast subscription. As you guys know, and I have to say thank you so much for participating in the Wi-Fi project that is coming to you. Um, from my understanding now, um, I they came to speak to you on August nineteenth, and you all um decided to contribute from the city of Boynton Beach um funding to help pay for the um, the Wi-Fi boosters for the children so that they could have them in their homes. Um, so seventy-five thousand dollars, that's a huge gift to this project. The funding, as you know, comes from the um county, big amount of the funds, and it's been a partnership between Palm Beach County with the CARES dollars and uh the school district of Palm Beach County, along with um all of the cities that are involved. And so you all are currently in the process of looking, they're getting permits right now for Boynton. They're going to be putting um the Wi-Fi on fifty-nine poles in Boynton, um, coming up soon here. So within the next month, they'll be looking for those poles and start moving forward with that project. When we are complete with the Wi-Fi project, um, two thousand three hundred and eighty-three students in the city of Boynton Beach will have access to um Wi-Fi internet within the city, and that'll be about one thousand two hundred and seventy-two families. Um, so huge thank you for partnering with us on that project. This has been something that has been sort of a dream of mine to be able to get internet within our communities to really, as you mentioned, talking about the digital divide, trying to solve for that problem. This is a great opportunity that's come to us from the pandemic, and I'm so glad to see the city of Boynton jumping on board with that. So let's talk about diagnostics and how difficult that has been lately. So we, right now, what I'm I'm going to talk about is elementary school. We actually compared the diagnostics from our elementary in the fall of last year to the fall of this year. So if you look at those times, that would be a pre-COVID and a post-COVID numbers. What we're seeing really across these numbers is that students who are participating in person, when they came back to school, did better um in um both English and math, though even more so in English. Um, in most of the schools, being in person, being in distance learning is very challenging for these students. Um, sometimes it's difficult for them to log on, or if their parents are not home with them, they may not log on. Um, so, and it's difficult to keep them engaged in person. It's a lot easier. So some of the numbers I wanted to point out to you, Forest Park Elementary um was actually, the kids in person um on campus had gains of thirteen point five percent from last year to this year, but the students who were distance learning actually went down six percent. So tracking similar students at the school, in just that time in fifth grade, they went down that much. Another example is that um Galaxy Elementary, our distance learning students went down ten percent uh from last year to this year, but our on-campus students actually went up three point two percent. So you can see in some of those examples, students are rising up a little bit more from their scores um when they're in person, but the distance is just a lot more difficult for them to deal. The math scores are very similar. Um, one of the ones that I pulled up was Rolling Green. Um, our distance learning for math, grade level four, went down nine point two percent. Um, but the on-campus kids only went down point four percent. So math is very affected about whether or not you are in person and you're actually um have recently had um uh instruction. It's very influenced by immediate instruction. So to be able to have the students have a teacher interact with them really does help a lot. Um, so these are, there's some numbers going along with that. One of the other very big indicators that we have been looking at lately, that is one of the reasons I wanted to come talk to you, is how many students we have with an F. You may have seen this in the Palm Beach Post article that came out. Um, so if you look at the school district overall, last year in two thousand and twenty, in the beginning of the year, we had after quarter one, fifteen percent of our students in the district as a whole had at least one F. And then, as the district at a, as a whole, this past quarter, it went to twenty-eight percent. So you can see there's a, there's quite a big uh jump up. Now, if you look at Boynton Beach specifically, Congress Middle was eighteen percent normally in two thousand and twenty, and Boynton Beach High was twenty-five percent normally in two thousand and twenty. Those numbers jumped up during COVID of a student having at least one F to Congress Middle is forty-one percent, and Boynton Beach High is fifty-one percent. So that means that half of the kids at Boynton Beach High, after the first quarter, had one F at least on their um report cards. So that number went up um twenty-six points uh from last year to this year. So the difference for me um is really to show how difficult it is for students. If you remember, I said um seventy-five percent of the kids at Boynton Beach High are are virtual right now. So we're having students who are virtual and participating that way, which we know is more challenging, and they, and there's the Fs are going up from that. So it's a big, it's a big challenge for our communities and for our students to deal with the pandemic, and the impact on schools is huge. Um, we had to put a plan together for the state, and the plan came down to um asking the state if they were saying to us that we had to show assurances that we were trying to educate students. So our assurance number five is basically saying that our students making adequate progress. So we have two criteria that we're looking at at our students to decide if they're making adequate progress or not. So the first one is, do you have at least two Fs in a core classroom? So if you do, that means that you're not making adequate progress. And then are you, did you miss at least three days or more in a three-week period? And so if your attendance is poor, you're not making adequate progress. So for those students, we're actually reaching out to their parents and asking them to sign a paper that says that if you don't choose to come back, you understand the risks that your children are going through. So we're asking those students that are really struggling to come back. Um, for your students in in Boynton Beach Schools, Boynton Beach High School has um four hundred and ninety-six students that are not making adequate progress right now. That's thirty-three percent of their students. Congress Middle, two hundred and sixty-two, that's twenty-two percent. Um, the numbers for elementary are even higher. Fifty-four percent of Rolling Green is not making adequate progress right now. Forty-eight percent of Forest Park, forty-three percent of Galaxy. Um, Citrus Cove is nineteen, cross point forty-two, and Freedom Shores is thirty-five, Point Sienna, twenty-four. So you can see, um, there's quite a few students that um during this time, um, were considered not making adequate progress, and so plans are being put in place for the students, um, hopefully, um, that they will get the additional attention and supports that they need to do better during this time. But for the city commission, I just want you to understand um how difficult this time is, and really to say um a huge thank you to your teachers for the work that they're doing right now, because the, this is not easy times. This is a difficult challenge, and they are working very, very hard. And so I think that's very important for you to understand. The last thing I want to mention on this is um, is really to talk about asking you all if you are interested. Um, some of the other communities, and I know you guys are such good supporters of education. I mean, you have, so, you know, Ms. uh, Mayor Grant, actually, I've seen him at so many different um schools during my visiting time there, and obviously um Commissioner Katz uh spends his entire life thinking about education. So you guys are are pretty engaged in education as it is. But um if you're interested in having um a little bit more of a tie, I would like to encourage you to participate in at least one school SAC. Just join that SAC meeting. So it's our school advisory councils. They're not meeting officially to vote right now, but my understanding is many are meeting. They just meet without being able to vote due to the executive order that we are under, you're under. So the same, the same struggle, but you'd be very welcome. Um, and the last thing I want to say about hunger is just um, over the holidays, we were able to give out um a ton of meals, um, which was wonderful, and it really was a huge um bright spot for us to be able to pass out that many meals. We gave out one point one million meals right before um the winter break. So that was a beautiful thing, but one of the, one of the challenges that we're really facing as a school district is when children are not in the building, we're unable to feed them to the level that we normally do. On a normal year, we give out thirty-three million meals, but because of the COVID pandemic, um, our numbers have been so much less. Um, since the pandemic started, Since the pandemic started, we've given out twelve million meals, seven million since the beginning of the school year. And so those numbers are so much less than the thirty-three million we should be on target for. We've been doing a lot of things to try to tackle that, including they're actually delivering to the ESE students using our buses now. There's a lot of different projects going on for weekend food that the, the school food service department is handing out. So we're doing our very best to get as much food out as possible. But the needs for hunger are very real in our community, and I think that's very important for you all to know. So I will, I will stop here and see if Dr. Robinson has anything she would like to add to this conversation and obviously open it for questions after that.
Thank you so much, Erica. I'm going to unmute. Ms. Dr. Deborah Robinson, you're self-muted. If you'd like to speak, please unmute your microphone.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Wonderful to virtually participate and, and thank you, Mrs. Whitfield. That was an outstanding report. The only thing I have to add is I'm really looking forward to the other side of this pandemic and how we can work together. You know, we know that we were dealing with what some people call the achievement gap. I call it the educational debt prior to COVID. That was superimposed by the COVID slide, superimposed by the summer slide, and we know who that's going to impact the most. And so I'm working on forming partnerships for community-based work. I bought an eyeball with our children who have have fallen behind the most to accelerate them. And so I am happy to partner with the city of Boynton, or actually, anyone who wants to do this work, but I know you might be very much interested. So thank you. I'm also open for questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, Dr. Robinson. I'm glad you're here.
All right, thank you. I guess my main question would be is, you know, for the, the health of the students with any sort of physical education, after-school activities, is the, the school district assisting with any of that?
You mean, are they open right now? Are we doing any, anything after school? Is that what your question is?
I guess that is my question.
Yeah, I don't think we've really opened up much right now. They do have some programs that are going on. We, we have had football in the past. We just had that. We've got a couple of different sports that we're participating in. But they've actually, they have limited quite a bit. I know my daughter is in, in student council, so we have had that. But the level of participation activities is, is much less. Dr. Robinson, do you have more detail on that?
No, I do not. But, you know, I am still a physician, and I am very much concerned about the ongoing threat of this pandemic. And so while I do understand, I do, I do understand the impact that this, all this virtual education is having on children. I continue to say to people that I need to make sure that they're alive, their parents are alive, their grandparents and aunties and uncles are alive on the other side of this pandemic. And then I want to look at catch-up. And, and that's why I keep focusing past the pandemic. Because unfortunately, for those of us at most risk who might live in multi-generational households, which is a great concern, I, I, I'm just, I'm personally, like, as a mom and grandmom and retired physician, not encouraging them to go back to school. As a school board member, I had to talk about the statistics and acknowledge what virtual education does. And so all that spins back to, you know, athletics, you know, all, all our quote outbreaks have been athletics. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm just concerned about people being alive and healthy on the other side of this thing. And that's where my focus is.
Well, let me say too, I, I really have been very, very impressed with our schools, our teachers, our bus drivers. I mean, the fact that we bring this many people together every day, and we really haven't had big outbreaks within the school day, it's so impressive. So people are taking this very seriously. And I feel like we're so close, like, we just have to hang in there as much as we can to get to the end of this. And hopefully, I'd very much like to see us get back to normal next year, if, if possible, or whenever, whenever it is possible.
Okay. And also, my other question is, what is going on with the, the old South Tech campus? Which is in the, the city limits of Boynton Beach?
I believe, well, it is a bus compound right now, and I believe we are looking at moving our south area intensive there. I think it's already been moved there. Our, our property in Lake Worth was a, was kind of decrepit and falling down. And so we were going to move our other alternative education center there. And I believe it's going, it was a part of, through portables. That's where we're, we're putting it there for right now. And possibly for a longer period of time, but that's really the, the plan right now, Dr. Robinson.
No, I think that summary was on point.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll ask anyone else from the, the commission if they have any questions.
Mayor. First of all, let me thank both of the speakers today. Board Member Whitfield and Robinson, thank you for being here and, and for that information. As you may know, I am also a public school teacher, and so many of the things that you've mentioned, I see it on a daily basis. And, you know, one of the things that really, you know, impact me and where my heart is is that, as has been previously mentioned, now there are students who are acclimated to online learning, and those that have just continued to have that slide, that COVID slide, if you will. And, and we all know who's being impacted. It, it tends to be the underprivileged Black and Brown minority students of, you know, lower socioeconomic levels. And, and so my set of questions really revolve around what is the plan moving forward for them? Are there any programs to kind of supplement or to catch up or give them another opportunity to retake exams? Because, you know, I see that, and it is such a heartbreak, because when I call on these students to participate in class, they unmute themselves, and I'm hearing babies crying, I'm hearing construction. Some of them are not at home. They're at McDonald's, wherever they may be. And I just try to imagine myself, if I were in their shoes, how difficult it is to even pay attention. I don't even know how they do it because of all the distractions around them. And so, you know, and Board Member Robinson, you mentioned earlier that, you know, you're, you're open to partnering with others. Well, count me in. I want to be part of the solution on this. And, and those kids, I don't want them to be forgotten. So, you know, I guess my question's around, what can we do for them? Is there a plan moving forward? I know there's a no semester exam. I, I can't say that's for all schools. I'm not sure of that. But that means that's one less opportunity for them to improve the grade. They only have their quarter grades, for example. So, so I guess my question is, what can we do moving forward?
Well, I'll let Dr. Robinson start with this one, because I know, I know she's very passionate about this, and then I'll answer second.
Well, thank you. So, yes, we can be best buddies and tag team on this. I would look forward to that. So what I really believe though, that this has to be partnership with community groups. This has to be small, small group instruction in the community, right? We, I have grandchildren in the system. I know that my grandson, but he's easily distracted when he's in the classroom, but the teacher can walk by and tap him on the shoulder. But that doesn't happen virtually, right? And so we're going to have to make up for it, but the only way is that good old-fashioned eyeball to eyeball, person to person, you know, where you engage with that student and that student, even if the only reason is because they want to gain your approval, that they will work hard, because we know that children will rise to the occasion. But it can't, it's, it's, I don't think it's going to be large group instruction. I don't think it's going to really be school-based. Like, yes, there's some school-based things we have to do, but you probably know as well as I do that because of the high-stakes accountability system, everybody is not focused on the needs of each and every child, right? And so we have, that's a community effort. And so I'm hoping as we move into our strategic planning process, that we embrace what's been in our previous strategic plan, which says that we will form these partnerships. And I mean with the folks who will sit with children, eyeball to eyeball, because I, you know, we go to church together. I live down the street. Whatever, real community-based support and engagement to keep the children on track and accelerate them. Have to do it as a partnership.
And I think what, what Dr. Robinson's saying there is so important about the community-based, that's one of the reasons I wanted to come to speak to you all. And I have to say thank you, Vice Mayor, for your work in our schools. I have gotten to see you a little bit in action recently, and that was pretty exciting for me to be able to say hello to you there. I, I feel like, and so we as a school district have actually tried to put together some plans for remediation and, and, and support and extra help. But I think it really is going to be about time. The students that haven't participated, we need to see them in the schools. They need to come back. We have to protect them to the level that we possibly can during this pandemic. But I think it is very difficult for some of these kids to participate virtually. So for the ones that are not able to be up to those standards that I was, I was explaining to you earlier, I do think it's very important that we encourage them to go back to their schools. And I think we're going to have to have tutoring after school. It's going to be probably extended supplemental time. I love the idea of the community response. Anything that we can do to really engage them in their education. I think there has been some sort of a, a loss over this time of the importance of education. And so I think as a community, we have to really speak to our students and our children and, and let them know how important it is that they really do well in school and participate in school and, and get parents to realize the importance of being a part of their education. So I think what I would like to see most of all is, is kind of a groundswell of support for, for schools even more than we've had in the past, because there's really going to be long-lasting impacts from this pandemic on what our students learn and how well they, they do and, and how well our community does. So I think you, you bring up some very good points. And I think one last thing I would say is that I'm very hopeful with this new administration coming in, that they will allocate the additional funds that we need to be able to recover from this in education, because I think this is not possible without additional support from the national level.
Thank you to both of you. And just one follow-up question, and we can continue the conversation offline, but regarding the community involvement and kind of supplementing the education, do we have any good models for that? Is that working somewhere else that we can replicate and learn from?
My favorite model, well, I mean, there's a bunch, but I know you guys have gotten a little bit of work with Roots and Wings and the work that they're doing around recognizing features in Delray, Boca, and Boynton. And also the work that they're doing around having support for creating tutoring programs in the after-school settings. And I know that that's something that principals really enjoy at those schools and are glad to have. I think as far as a model for, for tackling community support and bringing in additional dollars and additional supports for our kids, I think that one's just a wonderful, a wonderful program. And it, it's one I, I think that we should find a way to model throughout our communities. Dr. Robinson?
Yeah, you know, I have a bunch of them, but I'll tell you the one that I, where I walk the walk, right? So years ago, before I got on the school board, I actually ran an after-school program. So this was, you know, I would get off work, practice in medicine, and, and go to this after-school program for middle school kids. And I hired young people from the Teachers Academy at Palm Beach Lakes to teach under the supervision of a certified teacher. And it was homework assistance and guidance. But the hook was that, that it started with boys, because I have boys, right? So it started with boys. They wanted to play sports, so we tied it to basketball. So they had to get all their work done to go to basketball practice. And then on Saturdays, they competed in the West Palm Beach recreational league, right? So it was kind of this sequence, you can't, you definitely not playing if you're not attending to your schoolwork. But we had the support there. And, and those relationships developed between not only the high school students, the Teachers Academy students, and the middle school students, but also with the teachers who kind of supervised them. And, and had, and those relationships have lasted for two decades. And so that's, that's the model that I walked through. It worked very well. That's just one. But the important thing was about the relationships between the community members and, and the young people, because they wanted to please and impress the high school students and the teachers in that program.
It's very cool. It's amazing how that peer pressure really helps. Positive peer pressure.
Dr. Robinson. Let me thank you and, and Erica for coming here to Boynton. We are certainly trying to partner with you. Dr. Robinson, have you have you looked into, had, or had any success in bringing some of the educators out of retirement, and also like utilizing churches to, to help in this partnership in the community that you talked about?
Oh, Commissioner, hey, you are in my brain. So actually just had a conversation today. There is a proposal that I I'm, I'm coming, I shouldn't say it publicly yet. It's too soon. But yes, I'm working for a particular initiative in your geographic area with some folks that you know to do just that. Absolutely. But I will tell you this about teachers that have retired.
We'll talk offline.
Yeah, well, just like with anything, you got to have the right ones, because what we cannot do, well, we had to have a balancing act in terms of teaching third grade the way you taught third grade fifteen years ago versus third grade now, right? So some people can, can bring that old-school knowledge and wisdom to the table in this new-school atmosphere, but some don't adapt as easily. So it's, it's all about the right person. But if you have them, yes, let's, let's get them.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus or Commissioner Katz?
I'll chime in simply to say thank you to our school board members. Thank you for showing up today and for all the work you've been doing as a mom of two boys who are back in person now. But, you know, just very limited. I, I used to have them in aftercare and all that, but now I just pick them straight up from after-school. You know, it's, it's important for, for it's, all the work you're doing is just so important, and these numbers are, are very scary. So whatever I can do to, to help with that, and, and you know, I, I definitely get both sides, especially with what Dr. Robinson mentioned, you know, being African-American, being Black, like, you know, this, this pandemic is, is something on a different, a different level for, for all of us. So, you know, my husband and I had to make the decision to to bring the kids back, but it was a very difficult decision to make. And, you know, it's not easy, I know, for others. So whatever I can do to assist in that, to help kind of fix those numbers and help engage our families to, to, to really stop this slide that's happening, because, I mean, these numbers, like I said, they're, they're pretty scary. So anything that I can do to help, please let me know. I'm, I'm more than happy to help.
Thank you, Commissioner Romulus.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I'd just like to thank them both for coming as well, and I look forward to seeing them tomorrow night at the school board meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Katz. We're looking forward to seeing you too.
All right. Our next announcement, and thanks again. Our next announcement will be proclaimed Sunday, February seventh, twenty twenty-one, is Robert E. Wells Day. Minister Bernard Wright will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas Mr. Robert E. Wells, a merchant sailor from Cat Island, Bahamas, settled in Boynton in eighteen ninety, where he and his wife Elizabeth raised one son, Harry. Whereas in eighteen ninety-two, Robert and Elizabeth Wells helped found St. Paul's African Methodist Episcopal Church, officially established in nineteen hundred. St. Paul's AME is the oldest church in the city. Whereas in eighteen ninety-six, Mr. Wells and other members of the St. Paul's AME successfully petitioned Dade County School Board to provide a school for Boynton's Black African-American children. Originally called Boynton Colored School, it later became known as Pointe Sienna Elementary. Whereas on April fourteenth, nineteen twenty, Mr. Wells was the signatory of the document incorporating Boynton as a town. However, the land owned by him and the rest of the historic heart of Boynton was not recognized in the incorporation and was called Boynton Colored Town. Whereas in nineteen twenty-five, Mr. Wells platted the Robert Wells subdivision. He built the main thoroughfare and the historic heart of Boynton called Wells Avenue. He built the main thoroughfare and the historic heart of Boynton called Wells Avenue, now known as Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and built a home at number 416. In addition to selling land and building houses, Mills, Mr. Wells donated lots to those in need, including St. Paul's AME for the building of a church. In time, Miss, in time, Wells Avenue became a thriving downtown area for the black African-American community. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 7th of February, 2021, as Robert E. Wells Day.
I, I just want to speak for a moment. Uh, when we acknowledge African-American slash black history, we acknowledge and promote humanity. And there's no doubt about it. There's not about the skin color, except we have to address systemic racism in our country. And I don't want to talk about Robert E. Wells and our history, which is so very important. Because I'm with Dr. Robinson and with Brother Brian Knowles, where we really need to infuse black history every day into our educational system. Uh, sitting on the student council at Ponciano, my little boy was mathematician of the month. He doing virtual, he doing well, but I understand why. And we talked about what is the problem with our children being behind even before virtual? And I understood some things in the way our system has been, you know, designed with the wording and all, and where we speak and things of that nature. But has a great, uh, factor in it. And also with parents now being with children, you know, engaging themselves. Uh, 86% of our, uh, 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 males in prison were raised by single mothers. And 98% on death row was raised by single mothers. It's so important that we promote fatherhood. And I, I just want to stay relevant because children are having a problem in this state of uncertainty in this pandemic. Being a bishop and a minister of the gospel, knowing Bible prophecy, we are really in a state of uncertainty. We're in right now with this insurgency and it's real serious. Our children are really behind. I know this. I'm keeping up with this. I didn't have a father. I've raised my child from, you know, the barber every two hours to 10 years old right now. And I mean, great athlete, and, and he's there because he has me blessed by the grace of God. There are children who don't have the parents there. And I understand, uh, uh, Dr. Robinson, because my neighbor, he knock, he's ringing, ringing my doorbell every 30 minutes because he couldn't stay focused, so he had to go back to school. So I am a community advocate with a 501(c)(3) entity that is willing to, uh, partner with the, with, with Palm Beach County School Board. And whatever I may be able to do with my time and however we may be able to reach the community to, I mean, uh, tutor these children. Uh, by the grace of God, no, no doubt about it. I had to hire a tutor from Bossy Tutoring up in New York, and she was a gifted teacher, brought my boy up. He was way behind. And I tell you, he focused, he have not asked me or my wife one thing this whole year. And I can't do nothing but thank God. But that's what we're saying, focus, but it because of the environment. So we have got to engage ourselves. So I'm here with Dr. Robinson, uh, you know, you can get in touch with me, uh, BernardWright52@yahoo.com. My phone number is 7542460767. My email is BernardWright52@yahoo.com. I am president of Real Talk Radio, Bernard Wright Ministry. I am the president of the Community Review Board. I sit on the Historic Resource Preservation Board. And I'm here for people. I'm here for what we need right now. Uh, come out that last election for commissioner, and I went straight into the pandemic feeding elbow. And, uh, it's still been like a normal life, but by the grace of God, uh, trying to be careful, standing on the word, living word of God. But I know it's hard for all of us. And I just want to thank all of you all who have made this possible. This is the seventh year of Robert E. Wells acknowledging our history, you know what I mean? Uh, and recognize it, which is so very much important, you know? And so if anybody in Boynton Beach here, this meeting, have anyone in their family who has contributed to the growth and development of this city, get in touch with me or anyone from the Historic Resource Preservation Board. And let's, let's get this documented because this is what it's all about. But right now, I want to stay relevant to what Dr. Robinson and them is talking about, what we can do for these children. And I'm here. Call on me if you need me. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. And God bless you all. And thank you for this redevelopment we got going on in Boynton. We gonna continue to keep it moving. And I'm here for you. God bless. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Our next announcement is by Jacoby Waters, Committee Chair of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Awards regarding the 2021 award recipients. Uh, I do not see his name on the attendee list. Do we have someone from, uh, marketing to let us know who the, the award winners are? Well. If not, we can move on to our item 9A. Which is our city lobbyist, Matt Forrest of Ballard Partners, will present the key issues bills facing the city during the 2021 legislative session. City Commission to discuss and improve legislative priorities for the 2021 legislative, legislative session in Tallahassee. Mr. Forrest, you are self-muted. If you'd like to unmute your microphone.
There we go. Am I good now?
Uh, we can hear you clearly.
Fantastic. But no video, I see.
Nope.
Man, I put, I put a tie on today. I appreciate it. Well, it's a pleasure to see you. Uh, I wish I could be there in person. The new, uh, commission chambers look great. Um, this is usually about the time of year I, I come visit you guys in person and we talk about the upcoming legislative session. Um, uh, I can go through some of the items in the packet, but really I just want to, I thought I'd give you just a quick verbal um, summation of where we're at in the process, uh, and then open it up to questions. I, that's usually the, the best ti- use of your time. And I know you have a little lengthy agenda. We are gearing up for the start of a new legislative, uh, session in Tallahassee. Um, the session officially begins in March. Uh, I think that's something to keep in mind. A lot of times, uh, the, the session moves around, as you know, last year it started in January. This year doesn't start till March. The committee weeks that lead up to it, uh, much like preseason football, did begin, uh, last week in Tallahassee. There'll be another one next week and then three in February before the session officially begins in March. Another key thing to remember is this is the start of a new two-year cycle in Tallahassee. So all legislation issues, uh, that, that were around previously, um, start over from scratch. Uh, there is a new Speaker of the House, a new Senate President, all new committee chairs, new committee members. So everything definitely, uh, starts from scratch and all legislation, uh, even if it made it all the way to the floor last year or, um, even to the governor, starts over from the square one, has to be refiled. So we're, we're definitely at the beginning of that. Um, obviously with the, the, the state of the, the pandemic in the state of Florida, uh, things don't look as normal as they, in, in Tallahassee. Um, committee meetings have started out, uh, essentially virtually for members, uh, or sorry, for, for the public. Um, legislators are in the same rooms in Tallahassee, but, uh, public comments and things like this are being, being done in remote rooms. Um, they are very much, uh, hoping that will change once the session begins in March. Um, like we said, we, we are definitely, uh, just at the beginning. So they're, you know, they, they've put it in COVID protocols for now. Uh, they hope to revise them in February. So as of right now, it is kind of business as usual in Tallahassee in the sense that the legislature, um, is starting to file bills and starting to hear things and starting to get presentations. At the same time, it's not business as usual in the sense of, uh, they're ready in the hallways and, and meeting with legislators in their offices. Uh, much like yourselves, uh, things have gone to a hybrid of in-person and, and virtual. Um, one of the reasons I bring that up is as of right now, I know a lot of you have usually attended Palm Beach County Day, uh, which is a, 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 a program put on by the county, um, in which they focus all of the county's efforts. And, and actually everybody goes to Tallahassee for a day of advocacy. As of right now, that, that's, uh, it's in limbo. Um, they haven't announced that officially is not going to happen, but they also have announced if it will. I can tell you, most other advocacy days have been postponed or, or have gone to a virtual setting. So I think you'll wait to hear more of that again. Normally that would happen, um, the first Tuesday in, in March. So we got a little bit of time. Hopefully the vaccine rollouts and other, uh, the, the rest of the stats regarding the COVID pandemic will continue to trend in the right direction. And that'll allow for more virtual, uh, more less virtual meetings, more in-person, uh, one-on-ones in Tallahassee. Legislation is now being filed daily, uh, new legislation filed, uh, every single day. Um, we can go through legislative priorities right now, um, which were in your packet, really kind of more philosophical, big picture stuff. We oppose home rule, uh, attacks on home rule. We, uh, support other initiatives. But as for actual pieces of legislation, um, I'm happy to say there isn't a lot filed exactly yet that, uh, that I think are big red flags or things of issue to yourselves. Um, most notably probably, uh, regarding bills that we actually were focused on in previous years that I've seen refiled now is the vacation rental bill. Uh, you guys might remember this bill from several years regarding the, uh, the regulation or preemption of vacation rental properties, Airbnb, VRBO, those types of things, uh, to a state model. That legislation again is a great example of, even though it has been heard in committees in previous years, even though it has moved through the process prior to this year, it starts over from the square one, just like it did, uh, two or three years ago. So, uh, it goes back to the beginning. That bill has been filed, um, but it has not been heard yet. And it's hard to say exactly if it'll start in the same process or not. So that's really the kind of the, the, the main bill, the one I put a red flag on for now in terms of ones that have, have been issued for the city in the past that I know has been refiled. Um, the other big issue, obviously going into session that I, that I know for sure will be, will be a factor was obviously COVID-related, um, legislation. Uh, they're currently looking at, um, business liability issues regarding the pandemic. Um, and there is committees, uh, there are committees in the House and the Senate, uh, that deals specifically with the pandemic. And so you may see, uh, suggestions from the legislature regarding, um, even, even things down to the local level, uh, regarding your virtual meetings and, and, and how you can exist in a, in a COVID world in 2021. So those issues I think will be a factor in this session. And also most notably, the, the biggest impact of the pandemic, um, uh, other than health is on the economy. Uh, Florida is a balanced budget state. Um, we have the, the one bill they have to pass every single year is the budget. Uh, we'll be looking at, uh, a budget for the July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022 fiscal year. And right now they have about a $2 billion deficit, uh, to fill. So this is, to put it succinctly, a, a cut year. Uh, they're going to be looking to cut as much as they can from the existing budget. Um, things like higher end and healthcare obviously will be, uh, the largest places for chopping, uh, because they have the, the largest spaces in the budget. Um, but of course it's going to impact any small projects, any local discretion they have on funds, uh, which you know is something we usually go to Tallahassee and push. Uh, I've worked extensively with your staff, with, with Lori and, and their entire team. Um, we have refiled the appropriation items that we pushed, um, last year. Uh, notably a pedestrian crosswalk improvement, um, that we were successful in getting into the budget and made it all the way to the governor's desk. Unfortunately, right when the pandemic hit in March and the $75,000 for improved pedestrian crosswalks, um, was vetoed. Um, obviously for a larger, uh, issues regarding saving as much money as you could in the current budget. Uh, Representative Casello has agreed to file that for us again, uh, and is in the process of that. Uh, the other project is a $240,000 request for stormwater improvements in the, uh, heart of Boynton area. Um, this project we also, um, filed last year. We weren't successful getting it into the budget, but it is ready to go. It's shovel-ready and the, and we knew all the details for it. So we're going to file that again. Um, I have contacted your new representative, Representative Hardy, uh, Representative Omari Hardy, uh, who now serves, uh, in District 88, I believe. Um, and he has agreed to file that project for us and push it in the House. So I do, I would say manage expectations. It's a lean year. If, the, the, like I said, there's a $2 billion deficit. At the same time, you, you know, you still go to the plate and take your swings. And I, I think it still would be your good project that we need to push and try to bring home, uh, to, uh, to Boynton Beach. Um, with that, it kind of, kind of summarizes where we are. Um, obviously I stay in contact with your, with your staff throughout the session. Um, as bills come up and as I see bills in the, in the process and vice versa. Uh, I would highly encourage you to, to keep your ears open and your eyes open. You can never have enough people watching legislation, uh, to, to things that may impact the city. Uh, and contact your staff or me directly, uh, with any questions or issues you may have. And with that, I'll, I'll open up to questions from all of you.
Thank you, Matt. Um, Vice Mayor, would you like to begin? Sure. I, I did have a brief conversation with, uh, Mr. Forrest a, a couple of weeks ago. Um, but Matt, I'd like to just ask you, it's basically what you're telling us is because of COVID and the $2 billion budget hole, you know, our appropriations request in all likelihood won't be happening. Uh, but I, so let me ask this question because everything sounds so negative. And, uh, I, I understand the budget hole, but is there something positive that we can look forward to? Are there any exciting bills that could positively impact us in any way?
Right now, again, too early to tell because like I said, legislation is just now getting filed. Um, uh, so it's hard to say, you know, to point a finger at this is a positive thing or this is great legislation or here's a new. I always look at it two different components. You have legislation regarding actual policies, um, and, uh, or, or or any changes in statute that could impact you, or the appropriations process, the budget. So those are kind of the two main things. From a budgetary standpoint, without a doubt, it, it, it's going to be a bleak year. I will work as hard as I can along with the members that represent you to try to bring home some projects and some money. At the same time, just know we're already going in with a $2 billion deficit, uh, where they're going to be cutting areas. When it comes to legislation though, this could be a positive year in terms of giving you more, um, like, for example, I have heard, um, many local governments would, would like more discretion on how they have virtual meetings, uh, during the, uh, early stage of the pandemic. And, and the pandemic, uh, there was an executive order that allowed you more virtual, uh, discretion. That might be something they put in perpetuity, uh, rather than just an emergency order.
All right. Thank you, Matt. I guess we'll just have to, uh, circle back on this when we do know more, but thank you.
Um, so Matt, my, my questions I think lead to more for the, the environment. Um, you know, we had a discussion earlier this, uh, our last year in regards to 14 acres that we had. Um, and whether to sell it or not. And I think, you know, one of the major concerns that I have in Florida is that still the septic systems. Um, so if you know of any legislation that is kind of trying to help transfer the, the septic systems that are close to the ocean or canals, um, into a sewer system, I'd be, uh, pleased to hear anything like that's moving forward. Um, and then also, um, the city had its old, uh, dump next to the, the links at the links of Boynton Beach. I don't know if we're still having to monitor that, uh, that area. But I want to know if your firm could help us with the Department of Environmental Protection or the, uh, for Florida or the Environmental Protection Agency to make sure that we, we do everything that we have done. So that we can stop monitoring it and start, uh, using that land for other things.
Yeah, Mayor, um, on both of those topics, um, regarding septic to sewer conversion, uh, obviously it is not a problem or an issue unique to Boynton Beach. It definitely, uh, impacts multiple areas in the state. And, uh, I have heard, uh, positive, uh, at least possible positive programs addressing that statewide or at least in strategic locations. So definitely I'll, I'll, I'll put that on my list for you guys and, and keep my ears open to see if there's any possibility to assist the, the city with that. In regards to, uh, engaging with, uh, other agencies, we're, we're more than happy to engage with, at any level of, of state government, uh, to help, uh, to help, uh, any issue you guys, you may have. Obviously an issue like that is, is rather complex. Um, so we would definitely, I'd love to be part of a team and, and, and talk with the appropriate staff and also probably your attorneys, uh, to figure out exactly what, um, what mitigation procedures you have or steps you could take or exactly what the status is. But yeah, we could definitely weigh in at DEP, um, on your behalf with the right assistance as well.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Matt, a question for you. I'm getting, uh, inquiries or questions about this being COVID-19 and, um, those, uh, red traffic camera, cameras. Have you gotten, uh, heard any talk, uh, against, uh, red light, uh, cameras floating around? Up there. And by the way, thank you guys for the great job you're doing. But I'm just curious as to, uh, what's the general feel? Or have you even heard of any discussion about the red light cameras? But I'm just curious as to uh what's the general feel, or have you even heard of any discussion about the red light cameras?
Sure, absolutely. In fact, I I apologize, Commissioner, I shouldn't, I should have added that to your uh, that is always an issue, the for the city that has been on my my historical list. Um, uh, for starters, I would say uh it's very hard to say that to give a diagnosis or a a generality of what the legislature is thinking, especially this early with the new legislature. In the past, there have been several, there's been a bill every session for at least the last three or four that I can recall to repeal the red light camera legislation. That bill has been again filed, um I know in the House, um I have not seen it in the Senate yet. He, in the last few years, the bill has not moved, it's been, it is filed and not moved. Um, I have not heard um if that had, if there will be any new appetite for that uh with the new incoming leadership. But it is on my my list and and issues to to address for the town and 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 kind of monitor and and weigh in on.
Appreciate it, Matt. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Romulus or Commissioner Katz, do you have any other questions?
No questions, just Happy New Year, thank you for your work, and keep it up. Hope hopefully we have a somewhat okay year this year, and it's not as bad as it sounds.
No questions at this time.
Thank you so much. And so I want to recognize-
It's a pleasure working with you, I look forward to another successful session.
Thank you. And I do want to recognize the the winners of the community doctor Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Awards. Uh, Community Leader of the Year is Tori Orr. Community Business of the Year is Pyramid Books. Community Educator of the Year is Rita Simmons. Community Nonprofit of the Year is Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy. And the Community Youth of the Year is Jeremiah Young. With that being said, we'll move on to our next presentation, which is the presentation of the City Boynton Beach Operations Performance Management Dashboard.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something we've uh you've heard staff and we've talked with the commission over the past year or two of of being able to utilize metrics and data to help us make the best decisions we possibly can. And I wanted to just, you know, I I've sat down with staff and 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 actually started really taking a close look at some of the dashboards that they they've been using, they've been using for years, and we're looking at ways we can use them better, uh get more out of them. And I just thought, I thought, you know, this is something I need to be bringing to the commission for you for you all to see on a regular basis, I was so impressed. Um, I want to 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 share with you some of the tremendous initiatives we have going on and and what goes behind, uh you know, the recommendations and the information that we bring forward to you to make a decision. Uh, isn't just something on the fly, right? It's it's really based on on good evidence and data. Um, one of my goals, it's been for years, and we we've been able to to get there uh in finance and Mara will be, I'm gonna let David do a brief presentation, but Mara is going to unveil to you a transparency software for our finances, so our public can go on our website easily and navigate through our finances and and take a deeper dive into our budget book and take, you know, be able to um, again, you know, navigate the information, and I think it's in a much more user-friendly format. Um, and we're going to unveil this to you tonight and and go live with it very shortly, and we're very excited. And then secondly, we have a another uh, an expansion of a an existing software called Esri that can just do amazing things and our I think Andrew or Gary may be presenting that this evening, but um I'm gonna stop there, but you can tell my excitement. Uh, David, I won't steal all your thunder, go ahead and do your press, your PowerPoint.
Thank you, Lori, uh Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, it's great to be here this uh this evening, and um Lori did a great job of uh presenting um our strategic performance management program. It really is about how we measure and manage all of the operations within the city to become and continue to be efficient and effective at the delivery of services for all of our citizens citizens. Uh, I always say today's cities are really run like businesses, but instead of profit-driven, we're really uh service-driven. So it's our role to become uh continue to be innovative and agile uh foreseeing and forecasting any changes and adjustments in the future so that we continue to provide services to our community at a well-managed uh cost. And we really accomplish this goal through a continuous review of our uh processes. So uh, next slide. Oh, so we just want to take uh this time just to walk through how we use the system, right? It does, it begins with you, it begins with the stakeholders, um the city commission, uh our customers, our residents, our visitors, and establishing that North Star, which you as the commission have done through our strategic planning process. And it really is to establish Boynton as a destination, as a unique place with all of its uniqueness, all of its um uh benefits and amenities that make Boynton an exciting place uh to live, work, and play in and and that's 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 our goal. So I think I lost my presentation, do, are you able to see it?
I don't know if you can hear us, microphone just cut out. And uh IT's having a little bit of issues with your presentation. Um, it was on the the GoToWebinar, but it wasn't on uh Chambers' screens.
That is correct.
Should I proceed, Mayor?
Yeah, you can put it up on the screen or on the GoToWebinar.
Andrew, are we gonna have an answer in thirty seconds? All right. And Okay, not a problem.
There you go, yeah, put it up on the other laptop.
So David, is your-
Yes, I can see it.
Still there?
Okay, um, next slide, Yuri.
I I I see that your microphone was making noise, but we did not get any sound.
No sound.
Fine, Mayor, that's interesting. So it's something in the chambers.
So uh is it the GoToWebinar in regards to the sound?
Can you hear me? Has it? Still no?
I hear you, David. I don't know if the chambers can.
I'm gonna ask uh IT, is it not, is GoToWebinar coming through the uh speaker's system here?
Mayor Grant, this is John McNally, the technical issues temporarily were just the display, I'm not sure what the situation is with the microphone for David Scott.
All right. Or Commissioner Katz, can I hear you speak to see if it's? GoToWebinar. GoToWebinar, so yeah, I'm seeing that from GoToWebinar that the the microphone is picking up sound, it's not coming through chamber speakers.
Yeah.
See, I'm getting it on my uh laptop.
The audience can hear, I it's, I've had a few people text me, we can hear David, okay, so it's-
Okay, test, test, David, can you test real quick?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can again.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll just uh just again mention that this whole process begins with the uh conversation with the public, establishing what our goals and our mission and vision are for the city of Boynton Beach, making us who we are as a city and creating that excitement about our amenities and and the city as a destination. Next, next slide. So how do we start? Again, we start with that strategic plan, and with that strategic plan, we create the uh agreement with the community and what are those goals that we're gonna identify as priorities? And we establish those priorities with the commission through and the public through our budget process. And we establish what those priorities are and and then fund those priorities. And once we do that, then we are able to implement our strategies around making sure that we achieve the goals that the public expects. Next slide, please. We have to make sure that we are on target. And so what we do is we establish what we call key performance indicators. And those key performance indicators allow us to evaluate our processes, uh keep track of those processes and measure ourselves against uh others in benchmarking and as well as looking back and determining how successful we have been. And so, for example, I use uh uh then what you hear later on a little bit is about our our road paving program and how we evaluate our condition, make our condition assessment. So an example of a key performance indicator uh leading would be a percentage of D-rated um lane miles within the city or D-rated roads within the city, not the number of D-rated roads, it really is the percentage overall of your D-rated road. The goal is to move all of your roads, if you can, to A-rated. So once you identify that D-rated uh, how many D-rated lane miles or a percentage, you now take certain steps, actions, programs to move those D-rated uh lane miles or go D-rated roadways forward to either C or B or A. And so you continue to do that until you theoretically uh get all of your roadways to a A A rating. But of course, you have certain roadways that continue to decline or, and then so you you address those as well. So the lagging indicator to look backwards would be, you would like to decrease the percentage of D-rated lane miles or roadways within the city of Boynton Beach, so you have and continue to have, maintain uh that at a minimal or zero. So next slide. We establish a a tracking group or system by which we track these uh key performance indicators and processes. And right now that is housed within the executive team, led led by Lori, the Assistant City Managers, and a team of directors uh including the Police Department, Fire Department, and others, and we go over some of the data. Uh, we've started with community standards, Public Works paving, and we've added building permitting as the initial uh departments and uh sections that we're addressing initially. So they sit down with us, we go over their key performance indicators, look at what we can improve and work together as a team. It really becomes a team effort on how we can address some of those challenges within each of those departments. So next slide. We confirm those, and again, that cycle, we go through that cycle, we look at the key performance indicators, we pull the pop those up on dashboards through reports and sit down and have a conversation as to how we can improve. Our goal is to become more efficient, identify inefficiencies, and correct those very quickly. It also helps us, as I'd say, be more agile and be more forward-thinking and identify any changes to that data. If we see something as a, if there's an anomaly, we're able to address it quickly and and effectively. Next slide. So as Lori mentioned, we've already, we've taken each of the departments and I just want to thank and and acknowledge that each of the departments already has and uses data to make daily data-driven decisions in their operations and how they deploy. For example, as you are aware, the police uses data uh a lot on crime stats to really focus on where they deploy their resources. Public Works does that, and they're very data-rich uh to ensure that the residents and visitors and uh to the city have the highest quality water available to them. Um, and they also look at where they can expand their system uh when when needed. So we've developed an uh executive dashboards, and very soon, as Lori mentioned, we'll be able to make these public facing. So these are just some of the development um snapshots or screenshots of what these will look like. And all of the departments that are included in this dashboard currently that are tracking data on a regular basis and will continue to do so. Our goal here is to make this uh get public facing with certain key performance indicators that are very important to to our residents and businesses. All right, next slide, thank you. Uh, here we have uh buildings, some of the data that we're tracking buildings where that show where building permits exist. Uh, you'll be able to pull up uh different information there, community standards, you'll see a heat map where there there's activity um in certain areas where they're addressing, next slide. And I'll just breeze through these so we can get to our live demonstration. Um, you'll hear later about our pavement management program. Next slide. Uh, this links to our police department, and there's crime data and crime statistics that's available. Next slide. I mentioned the fire department, this is some of the information that you will be able to see uh once we get there, utilities again tracks a lot of data. Next slide. Uh, finance will, and they're one of the the departments that we'll be presenting um in a few minutes. And then additional departments and dashboards that you'll be able to see, which is the uh human resources and risk management, strategic plan, as well as economic development and some of those uh data that are being tracked through Esri. And as you saw on the last slide, uh keep this one, but on the last slide, what gets measured gets managed, and that's our ma- mantra. Um, so right now we'd like to have finance, Mara is ready to present uh a live demonstration of finance, and then following Mara, uh Gary Dumire will present uh Public Works uh paving. So if we could switch to Mara, if we are able to.
Mara is now unmuted and has presentation.
Hey, can you guys see my dashboard here?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Mara Frederickson, Director of Financial Services. As part of the city's performance management team, finance has been working on developing a financial transparency webpage that would make our city's finances more available to the public. While this page currently has a high-level overview, which I'll demonstrate in a minute. Um, as we develop and continue to grow this page, our intention is to add more data, which will become available to the public as we add to it. Currently, the data is available through the first quarter of our fiscal year, which is December of 2020. And we've partnered with Gravity as our vendor to assist us with building this website. Um, one of the things I love about this site is it's really user-friendly, super interactive. Will provide a great resources to our residents um and give them more access on a timely basis to some of our numbers uh throughout the year as well. So moving into our dashboard, you see we land on the homepage, which gives you our budget summary. And it gives our residents a brief description of what the city's current revenue and expenditures are. And it gives them kind of a a verbal terminology of what makes up that um some of those major revenues and expenses. So that's our home screen. If we move to the next tab, it's our budget summary tab. And this you can look at, it's got a availability of looking at 2018, 19, 2019, 20, 2021. And you can look at in a bar chart, you can look at it in um the circular chart that you were just looking at. And you can also go through and apply some filters, so if you're looking for by fund or by department, division, or um say you want to get into salaries and things like that, you can actually sit and drill through and select and filter this data and look at um different areas of um the data that's available here. One second. And then you can click and hover over each of the different areas of the pie chart and it'll give you the dollars associated with it and things like that. You can click on them individually, go back and forth. And then over here as well, it gives you the option to print the chart, you can download it in an Excel version, you can view the data in a table. And that's on every tab is drillable the same way. You can apply the filters the same way as well and download in Excel as well. So it gives you the budget details, you can look at revenues and over on the side to the right here, you'll see the different types of revenues. It kind of breaks it down into different areas of revenues. You can look at expenditures and you can look at it again by fund, by department division, by specific, if you want to look at salaries in itself, and you can drill into that as well. I mean, obviously not individual salaries, but as a whole for what is posted as part of our funds themselves. And again, this gives you current year, 2019, 20, and then 2018, 19. There's another tab that just has your general fund and you can drill into that data specifically. One of the ones that I'm really excited about is your budget versus actuals tab. And that gives us, you can look at these month by month. You can look at these, it's got revenue summary, expenditure summary, you can look at a two-year comparison as a whole and kind of look at where we were last year versus where we are currently. And then the trend line based on what we have budgeted and where we're falling within that trend line as well. So you'll see that going across the top as well. The next tab are your basic capital projects, local government surtax, your utility capital, and then your main capital. So if you click on one of these project tabs, it brings you into and you can look at revenues. Obviously, this is funded the majority of state share revenues and then any interest earned in reserves. If you look at expenditures, it kind of breaks it down into some of the major categories, your general government, your IT, public safety, and things like that for, this is your local government surtax fund. If you go into report, it gives you the last several years of the budget book itself. And you can look at different department divisions, you click on, it's got the budget summary, general fund, utility fund, and you can go through and just click on each one of these and it'll take you to a different section of the budget book that you want to look at. And then the last tab here is frequently asked questions. Some of these are what are the city's pension expenses for the past three years? And it gives you 2020, 21, 2019, 20 and 2018, 19. And it breaks it down by fire, police in general. What are the total number of employees in the city? So for the adopted budget, we had 847 budgeted positions, 802 full-time and 45 part-time. So these are just some of the questions that we see frequently here in finance and wanted to make that more available to the public. As you know, we get more questions or as we make this more available to the public and have some other ideas, we'll obviously update that as time goes on as well. So that being said, are there any questions for me on this?
I'm not hearing any.
Okay. So then I think we're going to Gary next, who's going to give his demonstration.
Thank you, Mara.
Thanks, David.
Mara, when does this go live?
Actually, it's ready to go live, but probably no later than the end of the month.
It's good for the newsletter, Eleanor.
Gary, you're self-muted at the moment.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Gary Dunmire, the City Engineer. As you know, as David's been saying, the city is focused on data-driven results. We don't make arbitrary decisions and the same is true when it comes to our roads and maintaining our roads. To that end, I've helped create this, what I'm calling the Rocks Map, this road conditions score map. This is a GIS aerial map porthole that is available to the public within a couple of days. And it's created to help the city and its residents know what condition the roads are in. Because of this map, the city can make informed decisions about how to best budget road maintenance dollars. It helps to build road rehabilitation projects and it helps me coordinate those projects with utilities and with the stormwater division. And this is what I mean. So currently in the middle of the map, we're looking at a 50,000-foot view. And you're seeing an aerial photograph with colored lines that represent the roads pavement condition. Over here on the left, it has a legend. And so you'll see that all the roads that are in green are an A condition. All the B rated roads are purple. All the C rated roads are yellow. All the D rated roads are orange and the F rated roads are all in red. Now, as I zoom in, as I zoom in, let's just have a look at Northwest Third here. We can focus in on these neighborhood streets. The color of this road is orange. And from the legend, you can tell that this is a D rated road. So why is the condition of this road D rated? Well, in accordance with the Asphalt Institute Standards, I first drove the road and determined what the rideability of that road was. Then I parked my car and then I walked the road. And when I'm walking these roads, I'm looking for several different types of pavement defects. These defects includes but aren't limited to cracks, whether they're longitudinal cracks, they're alligator cracks, block cracking, transverse cracks. I look for other sides of running, some edge failures, potholes, many things that lets me know that the base of the road is failing. And when I'm finished walking the road, I determine a percentage of the road that is impacted by each one of those deformations. And then I assign a value to that pavement deformation. For instance, if there's a crack in the road, I assign that deformation or that particular defamation of five. And if that crack is only present on 20% of the roadway, I multiply five times 20% with the result of one. And then I do the same exercise with each deformity. Then I subtract the total deformity scores from 100. So in this particular case, when I walk the road, I must have found almost 40 points worth of errors or defects on the road. And thus it resulted in a letter D. Now, when I'm looking at this map, I can click on the segment of road. And the map gives me a little pop-up box. It tells me more about the road. So it tells me the street name, what district I'm in. It tells me the score, 66, the resulting letter grade for that score, which is a D. And then the year I scored it. As I scroll down a little bit, it tells me it's a two-lane road. And then when I go to this next part of the tab, it tells me how much area the road consumes in this particular segment of roadway. Now with the area of the road, I can use historical costs and calculate the budget that I'm going to need to repair that segment of a road and restore it to the A condition. Now, as I zoom out, you can see this whole neighborhood. And you can see some of the neighborhoods that surround it. And so you might be asking yourself, how do I build projects based on this map? Well, there's three philosophies. One, I can fix all the F rated roads first, then go do all the D rated roads and then go do all the C rated roads. The next philosophy is to group projects together. And how would I do that? I would probably group neighborhoods together. And then to group neighborhoods, I would get a weighted average of all the scores of each road. And then assign a priority based on the lowest score. So the lowest scoring neighborhood would have a higher priority. And then the third philosophy would be to do a hybrid of both. And that's mostly what I do here in the city is I use a hybrid method. So I've fixed portions of the road to make them so that it will last longer, so I can fix the neighborhoods that have the worst roads. So as you can see, now that this map is built and populated with road condition data, that this data is driving our decisions and it helps me make more informed decisions about road maintenance. For now, I will conclude and make myself available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
So I just wanted to, as Lori mentioned earlier, we really wanted to present to all of the work that we've been pulling together to roll up into a public-facing dashboard, share with the public and the community and the commission, what is available and what will be available shortly. And just give a early indication of what this dashboard would look like, the executive dashboards would look like in the next couple of weeks or months. We certainly attend on it continuing to be as robust as you saw tonight. And we'll continue to use it as we make data-driven decisions. And we really just wanted to make the, I'd like to make a final point that as we become more efficient, it really helps to free up resources to invest in other areas. Again, helping us to manage our costs within the city and run our government as efficiently as possible. So with that, if you have any questions for me, I will conclude as well. So I want to thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Commissioner.
So not necessarily question, but a comment. I'm just very pleased that we're moving forward with this and having this, all this information open to the public. You know, for me, my, one of my first thoughts, you know, maybe it's just because we had some school board members here is that the access to the youth having to do a school project about the roads or financing. It's just giving all of that information of the government available to the public, I think is a very vital aspect for our society. So if anyone is wondering what's going on, we have the ability to say, hey, we've always had this information out to the public. And so I'm pleased to see that in this way, we not, we as the commission know that what we're doing is the right course of action when we do the annual budget.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to thank everybody involved, David, Mara, Gary and your respective teams. I want to ditto everything that the mayor said. As many of you know, I'm a data geek, so I'm very excited to go through the data. I haven't had a chance to do that just yet, but I'll reserve my questions after I've had a chance to play around and take my dive in. But this is the right direction. Really excited for this. So thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to also thank John McNally and his team. They've done a yeoman's job, not just tonight, but they are building the model in Esri. And so they've been an integral member of this project as well. So I just wanted to commend them as well for all the hard work that they've done.
So can we do the Esri is an acronym? Do we have that?
Yuri?
The company's name originally is Esri and they call it that today, but it was originally Environmental Sciences Research Institute. And that is the company that makes the platform that our GIS software is on and that now contextualizes this data.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
Question for David. David?
Yes.
Will there be an app on your cell phone you can roll out on? Is that your goal? We can add an app on our phone? Like the current one we have with, you know, reporting problems in the city?
Commissioner, we could certainly look at that. Right now we are linking it to our website. So it will be available on the website, but I will, we will certainly look at that as well.
Okay. Appreciate it, guy. Good job. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. And David, you ready for your tourism strategic plan?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And John, if you could unmute Sergio Phaedra and Don Colitz as well.
Sergio is unmuted. Don is now also unmuted.
We're waiting for our presentation. While, while we bring that up, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner David Scott, Director of Economic Development and Strategy for the city of Boynton Beach. We wanted to take a minute to go over our and present our strategic master plan for tourism. This began as a conversation with the Discover Palm Beaches and the county and other agencies within Palm Beach on how Boynton develops this strategic plan to assure alignment with with the county and the county's agencies. So we started with tourism and focused on how we link to the county, partner with all of our partners to bring tourists into the, into the city and support our tourism industry. And so we began this conversation with Don and others and continued that work. And Mayor, you were part of that task force as well. And so we'll be able to walk through and present the findings tonight. And that's our goal. So if we get our, lost our presentation for a second. Next slide. Ken, Yuri? Again, the tourism is important. Tourism is important to us because we understand it drives economic development. It is key to the city's quality, generating quality of life and and the industry creates jobs within the city. And we certainly do, as I mentioned, branding and differentiation. We understand that by highlighting our amenities, we attract tourism, which drives our economy here in South Florida. Next slide. We took a strategic approach to this master plan. We certainly did identify and assemble the tourism task force, which we'll go over in the next slide. But it included our elected officials, our business leaders, our community, as well as many other stakeholders. Our universities were involved in this conversation. And we documented our assets and strategies, created a slot analysis to determine where we're strong and where we're not so strong. And we developed the strategies and plans and actions that we can act on going forward. You'll see that there are more than 50 recommendations. We certainly did focus on those things that we can accomplish now. And we'll continue to do that each year as we continue our budget conversation. So you may see, you will see that there are over 50 recommendations that came out of this task force. But we've identified what we can do now. And then as we go forward, you will continue to see many of those come forward and be presented to you during the budget process. Next slide. So I will turn this over to Don Colitz, who's the CEO of Tourism Strategic Solutions.
Great. Thank you, David, and thank you to everyone at the city. I used to be with Discover the Palm Beaches as Senior VP of Destination Development and partnered with David. And in May I retired, but I started a consulting firm to focus on tourism strategy. I'm also working with Mark Heffron to source investors to build out a hotel in Boynton Beach. As David mentioned, we created a cross-functional team of over 30 individuals with different disciplines and different experiences. We leverage city staff. We also reached out to the president of Lynn University, Kevin Ross, who I know, and asked him to partner in the program. So he assigned an MBA class of 35 students to work remotely on the project. And they were very insightful in terms of not knowing the destination except for the internet and really had some great recommendations. Next slide. So tourism, if you're looking at the review, Mayor, has increased 100%. So if this was a business model, this is a significant amount of growth. Obviously, because of the pandemic, 2020 is going to take a hit in terms of visitation, but historically going back to, you know, the depression recession back in 2008 and 9/11, you know, tourism has been very resilient in terms of rebounding. And we think that a third of our visitation comes from within the state and because people aren't flying. And we think that a third of our visitation comes from within the state and because people aren't flying. That we're well positioned as a drive market for people coming from the other 49 states. Next slide. So if you, you look at visitation by city and this slide is a little misleading in the context of, you know, a person come, come into Palm Beach County and go to multiple cities. But you see Boynton Beach, you know, there's 13% of the people stay at the destination, 20%, you know, come. And visit it. And to me, that is an indicator of a lack of hotel inventory. So right now, as I recall, you've got around, you know, 800 rooms. That's why we've done a study of the marketplace and the data basically saying there's room for another 144 hotel rooms in the marketplace. Next slide. So if you look at the hotel rooms by city, you're ranked number seven and represent around 4% of all the hotel rooms. Boca and West Palm Beach, you know, lead in terms of inventory. But as you noticed on the last slide, there was a big disparity disparity between stayed and visited for West Palm Beach. And West Palm Beach is adding over 1,000 hotel rooms over the next two years. Next slide. So why do people come to Palm Beach County? First reason is beaches. Second is to visit relatives and people love to shop. So you're well positioned in terms of what those key motivators are by optimizing both the intercoastal as well as the beaches. Next slide, please. They love to eat food and beverage, friends and sightseeing. So the number two and number five reason why people come to the destination is to see friends and family members. Visit Florida, who generated 121 million visitors in 2019. Surveyed some of the residents within the state and asked them, how many of you recommend to friends and family members? To come to the state and four out of 10 raised their hand. But the headline really is that 89% of those that were recommended actually came. So it's not TripAdvisor, it's Yelp, it's really a friend or family member, you know, recommending the destination. So, you know, my preview is that the Boynton Beach residents are basically apostles for your destination. And the call to action really is to create product in terms of packages where your residents can reach out to their friends and family members. And get them to come to the destination to experience all the great assets that you have. Next slide. So in terms of, you know, how did we get to the recommendations? What we did is we throughout the process, we had a monthly meeting of the task force for probably six to seven months. And I documented all the recommendations and we kind of second segmented them by food group. We had a 15 point framework that we use to categorize the different recommendations. And then we went out to the task force and we asked them to force rank them. Also partnered with all of the TDC agencies. Discover the Palm Beaches being the largest, but also sports, film and TV and the cultural council to add their points of view. The TDC Tourism Development Corporation, you know, has an operating budget of around $58 million. It's generated from bed tax and they've got over 100 resources that work for those four agencies. So rather than creating our own infrastructure for the city, what we want to do is ideally partner with these agencies as well as the state to create incremental momentum. Next slide. So the survey process is your IT department created a kind of a survey monkey that we sent back out in August of last year. With the due date of September 11th, we had 26 tourism task force members or an 87% response rate, which I thought was very positive. Because we had the task force engaged, they wanted to, you know, help the city move the ball forward. And then we ranked the different recommendations based upon high, medium and low priorities. What we were looking for is what's the low hanging fruit? And this conversation really started with, when I looked at your strategic plan and there was no reference to tourism. So if you're not in the strat plan, you don't get resource, you don't get headcount, you don't get funding and you're not on anybody's dashboard. Next slide. So we had, you know, 73% were rated high, 50% medium and 23% were, were low. And you'll see a ranking next to the different recommendations on a future slide. And that's the, the ranking, not as a percentage, but the number of people that, you know, voted for that strategy. So this wasn't, you know, David and Don, you know, plan. This was really a accumulation of everyone's feedback to ensure that we had a team effort in creating the future state for tourism for the destination. Next slide. So the ranking of recommendations, next slide. For those of you that have binoculars, you probably can see this, but you know, again, they ranked high, medium and low. And you can hit the, I think there's a transition, some animation here. So if you just go to the next slide, we'll probably fold in. There you go. So pretty simple. Next slide. So this is where we really want to focus. This is the 80 20 rule. One of those 20% of those 53 recommendations that we made are really the ones that are going to move the ball forward. And not that we won't get to the 53rd recommendation, it's a matter of time. This is a journey, not a drive by. So what we want to make sure is that is the city is planning their budgets and, you know, it's for 2022 and 23 and 24. That you've got, you know, staffing and structure and systems and financial support for the strategy. Next slide. Which is the medium recommendations and the next slide are the low ones. Next slide. And then, and one other comment, you know, tourism is the second largest driver of the economy. Number one is agriculture. So the GDP for Palm Beach County is $58 billion. Tourism represents around 7.4 billion. So this is something that really generates around $100 million in sales tax. It, four out of every 10 restaurants depend on tourists. One out of every retailer depends on tourism. So it's really a major pillar for the county. And Boynton Beach is not unlike the other 38 cities in the county. Most cities do not have, you know, tourism embedded into their strategic plans. So I think from a leadership perspective for David Laurie, they've really stepped up along with Stephen to make this a priority. Next slide. I'm going to turn it over to my partner in crime, Sergio from Discover the Palm Beaches.
Hello. Good evening to everyone. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Commissioners, thank you. Don, David, and so forth. I'd like to first say that something echoes something that Don said that Boynton Beach really is playing here in this. This is something brand new that no other city is truly doing. Riviera Beach has started that process with Don's assistance and our assistance. But it's, it's going to be a little bit of a slow process for them. You guys are this much further. And it has been a really easy, really, you know, it's been really easy with Don. It's been very easy working with Eleanor and David and some other city staff. We appreciate that support. Again, my name is Sergio Pedro. I'm the Director of Community Engagement and Advocacy for Discover the Palm Beaches. And I believe there's a slide, I just. And I'm sure if you're seeing it, okay, next slide then I guess. Okay, I think we can have all three come in. I think if you just continue clicking all three priorities should come in. Okay, yes, thank you. We'll stop there then. In looking at what we've been doing here, back when we first started this project. You saw all the different priorities, the high, medium, low ones that Don mentioned. And from that point on, I personally met with David and Eleanor and some other city staff. And we talked about some of those priorities and I took some of those top 10 priorities, the highest ones back to our team. At Discover the Palm Beaches and looked at them each individually about things we could do to be helpful, constructive. And make things happen. Like I said, we, we really want to see this happen for the city and for the county. And to be able to showcase what you guys are doing throughout different cities. That you're taking tourism as seriously as redo. As Don said, it's our number two industry. And Boynton Beach is one of our 12 major tourism destinations, one of our 12 major tourism cities. You guys have been part of our city advisory roundtable since the beginning. You understand how we market cities and how we respect the, how they contribute to tourism. And now you want to take it one step further. And that is the most incredible thing about this. But looking at these top three priorities. These are things that we can do as with help you from our side of Discover. And I'll just kind of quickly talk about these first three. And like Don said, there's not that the other priorities are important, but we'll just look at these three for the moment here. Reviewing existing amenities, looking at the greater picture of Boynton Beach. Yes, what's in the city limits is most important, but also looking at what's at the outer edges. Take for instance, the Laxahatchee Wildlife Refuge. The mailing address is Boyne and that's an important thing. But also you have what people want beaches and entertainment district is building up things to do. So, and also number two there, the brand of the city authentically, uniquely. Those experience, that's something we've always tried to do. My 21 years of experience at Discover before that convention of visitors bureau. Was the people who do want to come to the Palm Beaches want those local experiences. They want to know why we're different from Miami and Fort Lauderdale, why we're different from Orlando, why we're different from Tampa. And Boynton Beach is that creating a tourism master plan will be able to showcase those things. Be able to, you'll be visitors, be able to see those local experiences. But also the brand, put it this way, that we're going to be rediscovered. We'll discover will be showcasing a new brand campaign in this new year. Some of the city staff has seen bits and pieces of it, but we're going to be introducing to that, introducing everyone in the county that over the next six months. And I think that, that kind of leads into the third point is that you've already developed some tourism webpages. There's more to come for that and that's something again, we can help you with. Because that's what we're here to do. We're here to help you develop a tourism master plan, but also help you develop a tourism strategy. So I think your city webpages can be expanded, perhaps our look and feel can be added to it. But also still have something that's uniquely Boat Boyne. And I would also kind of, I almost forgot to mention it, that one of the most important things I think Boyne's got going for it is that, that brewery district. You guys are at the center of what we consider the, the ale trail. So I commend you for that. That's an easy selling point, to say the least. Next slide, please. I think I'll turn this over back to David and Don, but I appreciate the time tonight. And I think the, the best days are ahead of us for this plan.
Thank you, Sergio. Going forward, we just, we'd like to hear from the commission if you had any questions. But our goal is to take any comments you have regarding the recommendations and include those into our strategies. Update our strategic plan to include some of these recommendations. As Sergio mentioned, we're working very closely with Eleanor. We see this as a joint project. Economic, economic development and marketing have been working closely together on branding the city. So these are just very near and dear to, to our mission. And then we will communicate that plan to our eternalist, external stakeholders to make it part of our strategy going forward. So at this time, next slide, does the, any questions from the commission? I'm available, Sergio or Don and Eleanor, if, if you had any questions specifically for her, she is also available.
Thank you all for that great presentation. I'm very excited that we have this tourism plan to help economic development within our city. One of the things is the, the recommendations in regards to the branding. I know that I've had some comments in regards to the wood signs that we have on our east west roads. Bull bright Boynton Beach Boulevard when coming in. I think that is something that we do need to focus in on. That anybody coming to the city of Boynton Beach, that it should not be a weathered wood sign. That we should really focus in on, on the new stuff that we have going on. You know, I'm unaware of that roller coaster that is an existing amenity, but if you let me know that, that'd be wonderful. And I think that's kind of where I got it a little confused with some of the things in the low priorities and the high priorities. Is that the Arts and Public Place Program is one of our existing amenities that people come to, to see the sculptures. And I think, you know, my main goal is, is that. We need to find that low hanging fruit in this type of market, but would give us the biggest bang for the buck. And I think it's kind of doing that physical aspect of when people are coming in. Showing them that Boynton Beach is more of a new city compared to the old. And, and that's, that's, those are my comments and questions.
Yeah, I was having a conversation with the director of the art board and we talked about place making and experience centers. So I will be making a presentation to the art board in the, in the near future to connect art to tourism and destination.
Anyone else from the commission? Yes, thank you, Mayor. I thank you to everybody who presented. In the interest of time, I'm going to just leave it to one question. And let me also say that, Mayor, I couldn't agree with you more. Those signs are one of the very first things people see when they drive into our city. Want that to reflect a modern city, not a weathered city, to use the word that you used. Regarding the presentation, I think overall we're in the right direction. Yes, we're in a COVID year, so go after those low hanging fruits and then we'll accelerate from there. In the presentation, included a variety of drivers for tourism. And they were very broad drivers and I wanted to ask, in terms of Boynton Beach, do we have Boynton Beach specific drivers? Oh, tourism, when people come, what are they coming for? Because part of our plan is if we know what is working today, then we can build around that to amplify what's already working. So I, I guess that would be my starting point, what works today. And so we can plan, move, moving forward to amplify what's already working. Do we have Boynton specific data on those drivers?
We, we have, we, we would like to be able to confirm those. But the part of the task force was to identify those drivers, which we do have. When I think of drivers, Vice Mayor, I think of some of our activities such as our marina. As a driver is, so there are a lot of fishing expeditions that, that generate here. And there's a great fishing market, when I say fishing market, meaning as a, as a tourist destination. So when you think of drivers, we've identified those as key drivers that bring people here. People come around for the fishing in Boynton Beach and the marina. So we highlight the marina as a destination, as a driver. And as you say, build off of the excitement and the amenities and what the marina has to offer. And work with the CRA to promote the marina and all of the activities, recreational activities that occur in and around the marina. So that's just one example. As we market the, as, as the mall, should they, once they go through their transformation. They become a specific destination and driver. And you've heard me say this, you've heard the brewery district as a great, and Sergio mentioned that. If we support that and highlight that, that becomes a driver that builds a whole economy in that. And art, the mayor mentioned art, art enhances the area. So you do have events around art specifically. But as far as our uniqueness. But as far as uh our our uniqueness. We have destinations within the city, and one of the last, two two last areas besides downtown. And marketing downtown as an experience. We have the heart of Boynton, which I call um my cultural district, my black cultural district. That as we grow that, that becomes a destination. Um the last one I always pick pick is our our hospital, Baptist Bethesda. With medical tourism is a in and around that hospital is a destination in itself. So we focus on those key areas and build those as those drivers that drive people here. Medical tourism is a big industry. And if we market it correctly, then the hospital, Ba- Baptist Bethesda becomes a destination. And you come to Boynton because of the services you get at Baptist Bethesda Hospital. And I always say if they get a Wolfgang Puck at the hospital, you don't have to be sick to visit the hospital. Um so those, that's that's my, that's been my approach. To marketing and branding the uniqueness of Boynton. It's not just one industry, it is these destinations and the experience that you get. I want you to wake up in Delray and say, I feel like going to the brewery brewery district today. Or I feel like going down to that uh Boynton's downtown because it's hip and happening and everything's happening there. And so if I go to Hurricane Alley, I have a, I'm not just there to eat, I'm also there to experience all of the other things. That are going on in and around downtown and make it a day trip into into the city of Boynton Beach.
Thank you, David.
Yes, Commissioner Hay. Now, can you hear me? Uh David, I couldn't agree with you more on the on that uh what you just said. I was looking at your visitation by cities chart. Knowing that uh Boynton is the third largest municipality in Palm Beach County. I just happened to glance at uh Dairy and Boynton and. Um Dairy has a city visit at uh one percent higher than Boynton. But yet, when it comes to uh city-state overnight, we have a couple of percent more, which. Which helped me to to think that the maybe the justifies the hotel concept. Of uh building in Boynton because. That tells me that we we're we're really just beginning and compared to other cities who are much further down the road. And this to me with the uh. With what you call the the uh the the stops. Uh the Marina, the mall, the HOB, hospital, et cetera. And we're talking about branding Boynton Beach. We have a lot to offer uh here in Boynton. And um I I really commend you guys on your uh tourism uh. Uh str- str- strategic plan. Uh I think you definitely headed in the right direction, and I think that helps us as a. As the commission, the council of of Boynton Beach to. Make the uh right decision and the direction that we see our cities going in comparison. To others uh with this type of information. So again, I want to commend you, and when you get ready to brand the city, keep in mind the thing that we do have. Um the the Gulf Stream come the closest to continental United States in Boynton Beach than any city. Uh in our country. Uh we're a mile and a half from the ocean, I ninety-five. I mean, you just go right down the line. So um I'd like to uh talk to you uh. When you get further into your branding and just give give my thoughts to to the committee. So thank you again for for a job well done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh I will echo what you just said. We we are just beginning. And this commission has shown great leadership and will continue to do so as we. Approach it with thoughtfulness and intentionality. And that's what's different than some of our other sister cities. It happened and they respond. We're creating it. You you as a commission and 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 our public. Have created the destination that they would like to see the uh see in our city. And we have an opportunity to make sure that what we create is diverse and inclusive. Because we want everyone to see themselves in the future of Boynton Beach. So the strategies, the destination, the amenities, um the experience centers. Have to be intentionally um curated. So that everyone sees themselves uh in the city, race, creed, color, gender. Um we we we're we're doing it with purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Yeah, as a member of the TDC Board, I first want to thank um the individuals from Discover who are here to uh really just. And and who also support our staff in in producing this. I think this is. Uh revolutionary in how we continue to do um business here in Boynton Beach specifically focused on the tourism industry. Um you know, we had a pretty. Intense meeting last week at the TDC Board where we discussed the future of tourism, especially with. Everything in mind that's happened with COVID, and uh I think this will put us definitely ahead of the curve. By the fact that we've now, you know, set the precedent in terms of what our plan is um in terms of tourism, so. This is great. I'm I'm glad that we're just so. Ahead of the game and that we're doing doing the right thing, and and I'm definitely proud of my colleagues and and our city staff as well for. Putting the work necessary to make this happen. So thank you for everyone involved.
Seeing no further announcements, we will move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin. And do we have, I'll wait online for someone to raise their hand.
That option is enabled.
All right, thank you. And we got four people in the audience. All right, I don't think we have anyone raising their hands or asking a question. Going once, going twice, sold. Moving on to administrative, appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on the city advisory board. Uh for the art advisory board, I have an appointment of moving Martin Klauber from a alternate to a regular. I'd like to make that nomination.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We still have two regular and two alternate positions available on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And one alternate position available on Historic Resources Preservation Board. Moving on to consent agenda, would anyone like to pull an item for? Discussion. Hearing none, may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over a hundred thousand. Would anyone like to pull an item for discussion? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
No, I said so moved.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Uh the city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. I do believe we tabled item C, so I'd like to motion to remove that from the table.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Jim, do you mind reading ordinance number twenty dash zero three four and twenty dash zero three five for the record?
Ordinance twenty zero three four, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, amending ordinance oh two oh one three to reason a parcel of land described herein. And commonly referred to as legacy at Boynton Beach from CBD, Central Business District to MUC, mixed-use core. Providing for conflict severability and effective date. Twenty oh thirty-five. Uh an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of a portion of the improved forty-foot. Wide right-of-way of southeast First Avenue running east from Federal Highway. For a distance of approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet. Authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance. In the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. What is um? Believe the applicant is Bonnie Miskel. Uh. Your microphone has been unmuted.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Bonnie. I'm sorry.
We can hear you.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Um this is Bonnie Miskel. Uh we did a full presentation. At your last meeting, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, and we also presented all three items then. Uh I'm joined this evening by our traffic engineer, Adam Kerr, our planner, Mark Rickards. And obviously myself, and we're happy to answer any questions. There was a a great deal of discussion, uh conversations and comments. So uh we'll refrain from extending your evening um and speak if you need us to respond to questions.
Um and Jim, I forgot to swear everybody in. Uh can we do that as well?
We can do that. Anybody who intends to testify, please raise your right hand. Hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony? You're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. And so I'll ask the the commission if there is any questions or concerns. In regards to the the applicant's presentation as of last week, as of two weeks ago. If not, I will open it up to public comments.
Mayor, just a brief comment.
Yeah.
Earlier uh this evening, I made my disclosures. I apologize, Bonnie. I completely forgot. I just want to disclose that I did speak to Ms. Miskel about this project.
Thank you. And so I'll open it up to the public for comments. Um please make sure the the green light is lit before you begin. And state your name, uh an address, and any qualifications you may have.
Sure. All right. Uh good evening, uh Mayor and Commissioners. Uh my name is Jason Evans. I'm an attorney representing. The adjacent landowners of the um of the project that's before us. Um they, I spoke here January fifth, and we um we vehemently opposed the project for the reasons that we stated. Which I'll be restating again today for the record. Also want to make sure that everyone knows that. Uh court reporters transcribing today's um. Session and uh from Genie reporting. Um so. The um the objections that I had stated before um were that the adjacent uh landowners were being ignored. And um and I didn't understand why um the commission had voted five to oh. Um and the problem that I had was that there was incompetent and 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 non substantial evidence as to why. Um this ordinance, this proposed um ordinance. Number twenty dash zero three four should be approved. The basis for my objection is the fact that Planning and Zoning Advisory Board had voted this against this proposal six to one. That was ignored. Then we looked at the staff recommendation. That was dated September fifteenth from uh Amanda B. Ratigan, the principal planner, okay? That was dated um again, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, was a Development Department Planning and Zoning Division memorandum number. PZ twenty dash zero twenty-three. The recommendation there said staff had determined that the requested abandonment would not adversely impact traffic. That was not the case, as as Mayor had mentioned in the January fifth um session, that that. It would impact traffic and maybe impact um the uh the local um stores. Maybe negligibly, but it would impact it. Um so that recommendation seems to be not true, that portion of it at least. When we go into the part that says that um city functions based on the remaining street network in immediate vicinity. Would not adversely impact other adjacent property owners in the recommendation, that truth too is false. You had heard objections from various adjacent landowners that said that the issues were related to um ambulances, medical. Uh staff that would have to reroute if there if there wasn't abandonment to uh First Avenue. Um there were issues with regard to flooding on Ocean Ave and how that would stack up. Uh on Ocean Ave because there wouldn't wouldn't be an outlet on First Avenue. Um they were saying that there'd be issues as the First Avenue may have served as loading to commercial. Um. And other public purposes that this was land that was meant to be an artery uh to help the flow of traffic. Nothing was discussed, nothing was negotiated, maybe taking this down to a one-way street or anything like that. It was just an absolute abandonment. The next part of the recommendations is based on the above analysis, staff has determined that the subject right-of-way segment. Located within the confines of the proposed development of legacy no longer serves a public purpose. This is without analysis, within the confines of the proposed development. So are you saying that if someone owns a piece of property on the south side of East Ocean Ave? And on the north side, they can just abandon the street as a right-of-way? Because it's in the confines of a proposed development? I find that hard to believe. Um and that any other retention in that that the street no longer serves a public purpose. Other than retention of necessary utilities. I just described to you before all of the the uh the public purpose of of that street. And how it does serve a public purpose with regard to medical ambulances. Um serving the 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 stores that face East Ocean Avenue from the south. You know, as we go on through all this, would they were ignored? And this was on January fifth. And as I, as I took this matter very seriously. I emailed. Uh. City Attorney, Mr. Sheriff, and I asked him. In my email, I said, I hope this email, and I wrote, Mr. James Sheriff on January sixth, I said. Mr. James Sheriff, I hope this email finds you well. Just wanted to follow up from the commission meeting last night. Last night, there was mention of a Department of Transportation report that suggested the closure of Southeast Avenue. Do you have a copy of that report you might be able to send to me? Because when we were here, the mayor said that there was reason to believe that the Department of Transportation said that. It was a good idea to close off Southeast First Avenue. I haven't seen anything. Mr. Sheriff responded, I do not have a copy of any Department of Transportation report regarding the closure of Southeast First Avenue. I have a copy of that email. I'd like to see if the commission would like to see a copy of it for themselves.
Um I have not, would not like to say it, if you wanted to do a public records request, you would need to go contact the clerk.
Okay. I understand contacting the clerk, but I'd also contacted the city attorney. And in contacting the clerk, I knew that I would be timed out if I had asked for this request. There are other emails. There was an email from Tony Morrow, one of the adjacent landowners who wrote to. Um you know, Darren Mayor Grant, and he did this on January eleventh. Could you please send us a copy of all studies completed for the legacy project? We've not been able to get a copy from other sources. Um he hasn't, this was unresponded to. So you know, the 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 adjacent landowners and the other lady who spoke here from the Planning and Advisory Board, she feels ignored. Um you know. Voting this project down six to one. Um. And then still going forward five oh, hearing from the adjacent landowners, understanding that the recommendations may not have been thoroughly vetted. Or are at least at minimum unverified um is extremely concerning grounds for appeal. Grounds for a petition for cert, and this is a taking, and this is something that's not. Going to be taken lightly if the commission decides that they want to go forward five oh. Um the the adjacent landowners have rights, and they will pursue them vigorously. I hope you'll reconsider.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comments at this public hearing? Uh the green light is on. Uh Jim Knight, uh my address is seven forty Havana Drive, Boca Raton. Just have some pictures that I mentioned at the last.
Just have some pictures that I mentioned at the last meeting that I took of what they're using the street for, and they're using it for a parking lot. And I'd like to submit these into the record so you have.
Have someone from city staff that can accept them.
And I just wanted to put that into the record. If there are any other questions, we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. No. Sorry, you do not have another. If you want to submit a document to city, that's fine. I don't know. Someone's got a mic on. Bonnie Miskel. Is there any other comments from the public?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
I see a hand raised by Robert Neb. Robert Neb.
Yeah, Mr. Neb, you're currently self-muted.
Thank you. Can you now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Robert Neb, I'm on six forty East Ocean Ave. I'm one of the adjacent landowners that the attorney just so eloquently spoke about and what our problems are with this project. I just want to add one more thing. If you look at the at the map submitted by originally the developer who is no longer there, it's just the landowners on the back block, they're looking to package that, you know, these parcels, try to sell them to another developer. On their map, they show a picture including my land, which has nothing to do with them. I think they included that because they're trying to falsely attain more density than they could possibly get because the density obviously is based on the footprint below. And I think that you might want to look at the, before you approve anything, you might want to actually review their entire their entire package because I think they're falsely stating how much footprint they have under their building.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else with their hand raised or like to ask a question? And so hearing nothing else from the public, public hearing, public comment for the public hearing is now closed. The applicant has the opportunity to respond.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I would like to respond to Mr. Evans' comments because they are not reflective of Florida law today. First of all, competent evidence are all of the experts that work for the city, including but not limited to the city engineer, your fire reviewer, your your very capable and professional planning and zoning staff that are comprised of AICP-qualified land planners of many, many, many years and are experts in and of themselves, inclusive of a number of other reviewers that perform functions for utilities, roadways, et cetera, et cetera. So all of that information that is comprised and contained in your report is competent evidence, and this report is laden full of expert testimony and competent evidence. So on that basis alone, you can rely, should you choose to, as you did at the last meeting. In addition to that, we have a qualified and very experienced land planner, Mr. Mark Rickards, who put this application together and did so in conformance and compliance with your with all of your codes and and regulations. Additionally, we had, the traffic component to this report was prepared by a licensed traffic engineer, Mr. Adam Kerr, who is present this evening and can talk about his meetings and discussions with the Florida Department of Transportation that does support the road closure. There's no doubt about that, and he's on the phone and on the line virtually if you have any questions of him. But he performed all of that analysis in Palm Beach County through the TPS system, signed off on it. So that too is competent evidence. So to state that that none of this is unverified, all of this is verified. We're required to complete the applications in compliance with your code, and it is very extensively verified by all of the experts within the city and experts outside the city, inclusive of the Department of Transportation. So we have submitted competent evidence to for you to rely on and to base your determination on, and that information in the application was supported, analyzed, reviewed, and also in your report, you will note on each of the items was recommended for approval. So so, you know, I won't go into that further, but our competent witnesses, our expert witnesses, and by the way, I'm a zoning lawyer of approximately thirty years. I have testified at quasi judicial proceedings, and I'm prepared to respond as an expert in in this in zoning law. So so on on the basis of Florida law, we've met our burden. I'm very comfortable with it, and as was staff and the city in presenting this to you with a recommendation of approval. And and again, we're here to answer any questions. As I mentioned, Mr. Kerr is on the line as well if you have any traffic questions.
Um, I I do have a eminent domain question, as it has been stated. So we're abandoning a road that is not abutting any of the other property owners. Is that consideration of an eminent domain action?
I've never seen an eminent domain case on the basis of the facts that are being presented to you. I will tell you that the 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 abutting owners of the portion of the roadway that is being abandoned fall to my client. The applicant has consented to by virtue of submitting the application, and they and they are the abutting owners. If if a roadway is is a flat-dedicated roadway, the underlying fee lies within the ownership of the abutting owners. It is it is a dedication that is provided in accordance with your code. We, in order to abandon that dedication, we have to go through the process that we have, and we have demonstrated what we need to to obtain approval of this request. And your engineering department have confirmed that also, and I believe he's on vacation this week. But in addition to our meetings with DOT, I believe your deputy city manager also had, Mr. Groff, had meetings with DOT to confirm that what was being applied for was not something that was needed by them or in accordance with their rules, and they signed off on the basis that they found it acceptable and in accordance with their rules.
Thank you. And the the interesting thing is that we are not abandoning Southeast First Avenue. We are just abandoning one hundred seventy-five feet of Southeast First Avenue, and that there will be access on Southeast First Avenue from Sixth Street. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are abandoning the portion that lies between, you know, between that my client was the abutting owner of, only that portion.
Okay.
And and for the record, we've actually improved conditions of the portion of Southeast First Avenue that continue to remain roadway by providing better sidewalk conditions as well as we've expanded the area where we are able to have some off-street or or adjacent to the existing right-of-way loading areas. So we've actually improved the conditions that are out there. As Mr. Knight provided you in pictorial view, the road today is being used for parking not as a means of public ingress and egress necessarily. There is obviously public ingress and egress, but there is significant parking issue going on out there that is unrelated to our client's property.
Thank you. Does the commission have any other questions for the applicant? And if not, may I have a motion to approve proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero three four?
Sound moved.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor states, oh, sorry, this is a roll call. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penserta?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Vote is five oh.
Thank you. May I have a motion for proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero three five?
I'll move.
Second.
The the one comment that I have to make is that I use, I believe I use the word difficult. And so I believe that was in negligibly difficult because of the the fact that Ocean Avenue and Southeast Second Avenue are still going to have access from federal highway. The comment from our staff saying that it does not adversely affect, which means prevents success or development, I think is very accurate. I mean, I believe that the adjacent property owners will receive higher property values because of this development and further improvements to the area around them. And so if there's no further comments, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Penserta?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
As for item AC, I believe we asked for an additional loading or space along federal highway. Was that part of the the applicant's proposal as a condition of approval?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. If you can hear me, I hope.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Yeah, there's two conditions we, the staff's recommending that I believe the applicant is is okay with. The first one is adding additional loading on, as you stated, and the second one is, is we'd like to add a condition that the right, if the right-of-way abandonment, well, the right-of-way ban was approved, the right-of-way abandonment would not be recorded until the building permit is ready to be issued. And just make that a condition, and staff's recommending both those conditions. If you could amend that with your motion.
Thank you.
The applicant has no objection, by the way.
All right. So may I have a motion to amend with the the conditions of approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. Moving forward to propose ordinance twenty dash zero four three, second reading. May I have a motion to remove from the table?
I'll move.
Second.
Those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Hearing none. Jim, would you mind reading the ordinance?
Yes, twenty oh four three, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of a twenty-five-foot-wide portion of Southwest Sixth Street right-of-way consisting of a portion of the unimproved swell abutting the east lot line of the property located at seven oh four Southwest Twenty-Fifth Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. I remember asking this to be on the table as I received an email from one of our residents regarding the flooding in Chapel Hill area. I spoke with the applicant, and they state that they have gotten civil engineering reports that the current fill on that property is, puts it, the the current proposed plan is going to be better for water management in the future. And so that is why I will be in favor of voting for this abandonment. And I'll ask if anybody would like to raise their hand or make comments. I do not see anyone new. All right. If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penserta?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
Next item is eleven A, ratify the CRA's approval of the sale of eleven oh two and eleven ten North Federal Highway to Boynton Beach Office condo. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion from the city commission in regards to this sale of CRA property? My one comment is, is that the the property is for the appraised value. And so I think that's, you know, important for the the CRA to make those decisions that we're not selling property for under its value unless it's for workforce housing, affordable housing, or needs of economic development. Seeing that, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Who wants to have this? A discussion regarding attainable housing in the city of Boynton Beach. I know I do. Lori, where are we now with the city's attainable housing?
Now, I'm going to, we prepared a brief presentation, Mayor, and going to have Amanda answer that question for you. It's not too lengthy. We tried to to pare this down. I know it's late in the night. So you're, if you would, if you would please unmute Amanda.
All set.
And we have some suggestions you may want to consider, and this is maybe one of many conversations, honestly, or not. We did try to workshop this at one point. Our, the system failed the platform, so we ended up just getting it back on a commission agenda. If you're interested in doing a workshop at any, at any point, please let us know, and we'd be happy to get that set up.
So Mayor and Commissioner Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager, Amanda and I are going to tag team doing this presentation, and we are going to make it very quick as it's getting late. Yuri, if you bring the present, I can see it now. So we're going to cover a couple of things. One thing Amanda is going to do is go over what what is attainable housing, because we sometimes get those terms confused, and we want to make sure that we're we're providing housing that's attainable for for those who need it. She's going to give you some statistics on the Boynton Beach income levels, update on some recent amendments. We're going to recommend some changes that we have and some, maybe some future revisions that we we'd like to do. Next slide. So with this, I'm going to let Amanda kind of go real quickly through what is attainable housing, and it's important to understand this because it also is how, if we understand this part, then that's what drives the type of ordinances we want to put in place. Amanda.
Good evening, everyone. This is Amanda, the Celia Ratigan. I'm the principal planner for the city. I'm going to try really hard to make it brief, but this is a lot of information. I hope you guys can see the screen better than I can. It looks really, really blurry. Can can you guys see the presentation well? Because there are numbers.
I see it fine.
Yeah, it's very good.
Okay, perfect. So the first thing I want to talk about is what is attainable housing? And I wanted to point out that I am not using the word affordable housing. Attainable has nothing really to do with your income level. It just has to do with the percent that is attainable for whatever your income is. Generally, housing is attainable if a family spends no more than thirty percent of their income to live there. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Yuri, can you switch sides, please? Hello?
Yuri. Yuri, go back one, Yuri. Yeah, go back one, Yuri and Amanda. Amanda, Amanda, just give us time to catch up to you because you're remote. So this is the question.
Alright. Okay, so, so the next, the next slide, um, shows, um, the households within Boynton Beach that are spending more than that thirty percent attainable level of housing. So for homeowners, that equates to over thirty percent of homeowners in Boynton Beach are spending more than thirty percent of their income to live in their home. And sixty-four percent of renters are spending more than that thirty percent to rent where they are living now. Next slide, please. So the next thing I want to talk about is income and how we measure income. Currently, we are using the HUD Palm Beach County, um, median area income. And I wanted to align that with the Boynton Beach median household income and show you the difference. So right now, the median income in Palm Beach County, um, this is what our program currently is using, is seventy-nine thousand dollars. Whereas the Boynton Beach median income is fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, this equates to a very big difference in what you can afford. If you look over to the far right, when it's, when I talk about attainable housing, someone with the county's measure can afford a house that is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Whereas someone who's at that same income bracket in Boynton Beach can only afford a house that is, um, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So the way we talk about affordable in the workforce is going to be that affordable housing can cover very low income to low income. So that is anything under eighty percent of the median income. So here we're using the Boynton Beach median. So eighty percent of new income essentially means anyone who is making less than forty-two thousand dollars. For workforce, we're using the next two income brackets, which is moderate and middle income. So this would be anyone who's making between the forty-two thousand dollars and about seventy-five thousand dollars. So this would mean that workforce housing, um, you could afford up to eighteen hundred dollars in rents and a home that's about two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So we looked at income. Now let's talk about what jobs are in Boynton Beach. Um, thirty-nine percent of the jobs that are located in Boynton Beach have to do with sales, food preparation, office administrative and personal care services. Um, those salaries range from about twenty thousand to about twenty-nine thousand. Next slide. Forty percent of the jobs in Boynton cover things like construction, healthcare technology, educational instruction and management, either business or financial. Um, these range from about thirty-three thousand up to fifty-six thousand. Next slide. So now when we look at the housing that is available in the city, we can see that in, we're looking at the twenty-twenty second quarter. Um, there have been a hundred and seventy-two sales and the median price for a home was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And for a townhome or a condo, it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. If you could enter one more time, Yuri, there should be something else that pops up. Right, so if we look at the rental, and this was, um, average rent in Boynton in August of twenty-twenty. The average rent was for a one bedroom was fifteen hundred and goes up to a three bedroom, which was over two thousand dollars. Next slide. So this is a slide that I think shocked me most when we were putting this research together. Um, this data is from twenty-eighteen. Uh, we've just started looking at the twenty-nineteen data now. Um, but as of twenty-eighteen, about thirty-seven percent of Boynton Beach households fall into either low or very low income levels. That would mean, um, that they can afford a home priced at about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And if you're renting, um, you don't, you can't even afford the one bedroom because the one bedrooms right now are priced at fifteen hundred. Whereas this income bracket can afford only up to about a thousand. Next slide, please. So this slide was put together to really talk about the gap in income and housing. Um, of course, what everyone we're striving to do, to be in an area that live, work and play in the same area. And businesses in order to be viable need a workforce. Um, and there's no housing workforce. Without the housing, um, the workforce is struggling. Um, and it could be a future deterrent to have businesses move into the area if they can't see, um, that gap close. Next slide. Uh, Colin, I think you were going to take it from here?
Yes, so looking at the current programs, I, you know, the numbers kind of, you, 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 you kind of glaze over when you're looking at all these numbers, but Amanda said it right. The problem we have is, is the challenge we're going to have is if we're bringing in new business, they're going to need the workforce and the workforce, many in the workforce right now can't afford the housing they need to do, work in the businesses. Um, so we've got some challenges we're trying to overcome and we use data to do that, a- as we said earlier. Um, and I want to talk a little bit about where we are right now. Uh, today, we haven't had any projects built that use the current program. Or any units at all anywhere in the city. Now, that's not to say we haven't had some good units built because we have, um, Ocean Breeze East, and then we have the other one that's coming up, uh, a little bit north of there that are great projects. Uh, but we haven't had any actually use the programs that we have in place. So we haven't collected any money. We haven't had any units built. And, and for the building option, the challenges we're having, and we've talked to multiple developers, um, the challenges they're having is, is their current code, the current rules require if you're going to, uh, participate in the program, it requires you to build both the affordable and the workforce units in the same structure. The problem with that is, is it's just the finances when you, when you build in a downtown area where you have to build a structured parking or a parking garage. It just makes the finances almost impossible to, to make work with both. So, um, that's part of the issues we have is by combining them into the same options, we're, we're having some challenges. And then the, the, the pay in, uh, the pay in lieu of option is also, um, it, the, the, it requires you to actually pay for more units than you actually build for those units. So you're actually, i- it's not even an incentive because it actually takes away from the incentive of building the affordable units. And, you know, and it's been confusing to developers. So we really haven't had a lot of luck with what we have, and sometimes that's how good ordinances are built. You try things and when they don't work, you go back to the drawing table and try again. Next slide. So some of the recent amendments we did try to address that is, is one of the things, uh, y- you did as the commission is, is you expanded these programs to citywide, not just limited to the TOD. Now that has had some effect. We have a project coming in that is, it looks like it's going to provide attainable housing in the project that's outside the TOD. So I think that was a great amendment that's going to get us some housing, uh, that we wouldn't have gotten any other way. Um, I think the second thing we did is the units that are less than a hundred, seven hundred and fifty square feet. And what that does is it creates units that are actually within those rents that are affordable. If you look at where those rents are, that fifteen hundred dollars for, uh, for a one bedroom, that's a one bedroom that's fairly large. If we can get these units built smaller, they're less expensive to build, and we, we think that's actually starting to work. And it's going to provide, uh, some workforce level rents. It's not going to be affordable, but it'll be in that workforce level rents in the downtown. And the, and the developers like it because they don't have to, they get some incentives, but they're not required, uh, they, they're not doing any, uh, pre-qualifications for people. They're just providing the units at a lower price. The third thing we did is we eliminated the minimum lot sizes in, uh, in, uh, square foot homes in the heart of Boynton, which is, we had a bunch of lots that are a little undersized, and now it's going to allow these homes to be built on these undersized lots. And because the lots are very, very inexpensive, uh, the land is what's driving up the house, cost of housing, that'll lower all of those housing costs for people who can get single-family homes. Uh, next slide. So with that, we're going to have, we, we're proposing some, some revisions to the current program. Um, and I'm going to let Amanda kind of talk through this very quickly because, uh, this can be very complicated, but yeah, so there's some amendments we want to, we want to, we want to propose. So Amanda, take it on.
Sure. So the first thing that we wanted to do is kind of restructure the program. Um, the first change would be creating two separate programs. Um, the first one would be the pay in lieu of construction. Um, we do have a similar program now like we just talked about. Um, and the funds from this would go to city housing initiatives. Um, the locations, like Colin said, it is essentially citywide. The only groups that are excluded would be, um, your low-density and medium-density housing, which equates to mostly your single-family and duplex areas. The bonuses, um, did remain the same. It's a seventy-five percent density and up to two stories within certain districts. And the biggest change would be how much, um, or how many units you're actually paying for. So there was a reduction in the total number of units, um, that you would have to pay. So if you were only using the density bonus, it would be ten percent. Um, and if you are using both the density and the height, it would be fifteen percent. Um, the fees did remain the same. Um, we just lowered the fee by lowering the percentage of total units that you'd be paying for. Next slide. So the second, um, portion of the program would be construction and management of the units by the developer owner or building. Um, and this would be split into two areas, um, an affordable housing area and then a workforce housing. The bonuses are different. You would still be able to get the two stories depending on the district that you're in. Um, but you would only get the twenty-five percent density if you are doing affordable housing. Um, workforce housing would be capped at twenty percent. Um, and then if you are doing affordable, um, you would have to dedicate twenty-five percent of those units um, for three years to affordable housing. The assumption is that this program specifically affordable will be primarily used by, um, CRA projects within, um, the CRA. And then workforce, you would have to dedicate fifteen percent of the total units, um, for fifteen years. Next slide.
So, uh, there's some other, yeah, I was going to say, we have some other related recommendations that, uh, we, we'd like, we're, we're pushing forward that we've, we've spoken to you all about before, and one of them is, is, is to allow the accessory dwelling units in the single-family districts. What that does is allow somebody to build a little addition to their house in the back as a, as a unit, as a residential unit, or maybe a separate building as a residential unit. Um, and it wouldn't count toward density. So what it does is it allows on some larger lots, uh, a new affordable housing option, and it also allows the extra income for a lot of families that maybe they can get a little more house because they have something they can rent out. Um, so that's something w- w- we, we would like to recommend, and I, and, and then we've had some direction from the commission to, to move in that direction. Um, the second thing is, is, is to reduce the complexity and increase the certainty of the bigger projects. The more we can increase the certainty that developers can build the projects, the more, uh, available, the, the, we believe that they'll be, it'll be more available for them to build. So in other words, we want them building projects because if nobody's building a project, nobody's building the, the attainable housing. So to get people to build projects, we're looking at maybe implementing, uh, recommending, implementing the CRA plan. Definitely the land use and doing city-initiated land use changes on the property, uh, early. So when a developer comes in and they look at a property, they know what the land use is and it's already been approved. Next slide. So some of the discussion topics is, uh, we're recommending is, is we are recommending moving forward, uh, changing our code to use the Boynton Beach income levels instead of the county income levels. You can, as you can tell from the numbers, we're much lower than the county. And, and we think that it works better using our income levels for, for the, for the citizens who live in the city. Um, we, we recommend revising the incentive programs as Amanda talked about. Uh, we think that opens up the more flexibility and, and provides the developers the, the needed flexibility they need to provide those units within, uh, their developments. And then we also want to continue to develop, uh, codes and regulations to allow other housing options. And I'm not saying these are good, but such as container homes, uh, the, 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 the pre-manufactured homes that get brought out and, and set on a foundation. Um, and you, we, we've seen some of those pass. Start actually developing some rules around those. Um, so that, that's where we'd like to go if there's some consensus on the commission to move forward. We could bring these changes back in an order format that we're recommending tonight, and then we can also, uh, look for any other ideas you have. So I'm just going to open it up now to see if there's any questions.
Um, no, no question, just, uh, comment. Yes, please bring back us everything.
Hey, we can do that.
It's, uh, the aspect of attainable housing is something that we need to look forward to, and it's, it's something that the city staff um, would hopefully point people to the, the CRA to, to help us, you know, assist that saying, hey, you know, if they can't afford a certain, uh, what is it, workforce or affordable housing model, hopefully the CRA will say, hey, we'll, we'll help with the TIF funding to make it profitable. I mean, that's, uh, the big thing here is that you can't put affordable housing or workforce housing parking requirements in a parking garage because it's twenty-five thousand dollars of space. Or twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars of space, and that's just too much to add in addition to the cost of the residential unit. So it's, you know, I, well, let me ask the, the commission if they, if they agree with that, that, um, we need to have staff have a more closer relationship with the, the CRA and helping financing some of these more workforce and affordable housing projects.
And, yeah, Mr. Mayor, Colin Groff, I, I'll comment on that slightly. We, we are working, and you're absolutely right. We work very closely with the CRA as staff. When developers come in to try to work with them and wo- work with the CRA staff to find ways to, uh, creatively fund especially affordable housing. Uh, you know, we have a couple, uh, things we're working on right now that I think the commission is aware of and the CRA board's aware of, uh, that we're working together on, including the lots that were owned by the Housing Authority and things like that. So we are constantly working together to look for ways, um, to bring the cost of housing down for citizens.
And so, yes, Vice Mayor.
Um, so at this time, uh, the one thing that I am certain about is changing that metric to the Boynton Beach numbers. I think that's a no-brainer. Um, and it might just be because it's a little bit late in the evening, but I would love to return back to this topic. Uh, at this time, I'm not fully prepared to provide, uh, you know, comments on possible incentive programs. That's going to require a much deeper dive. I've been meaning to, uh, speak with Ms. Radigan and uh, that, that has not happened yet, but that is on my list of things to do. But, um, so yes, definitely changing that metric, but I'd like to come back to this.
Uh, Mayor, so, so what I, um, the figure that jumped out at me was, uh, I believe it, they were saying that, uh, in Boynton Beach, the, the households spending more than thirty percent of their income for the housing uh, was, uh, I think it was thirty point four percent. And for rental was sixty-four percent. So, uh, y- yeah, I think it's getting late in the evening, but I would like to, to, to come back to this, uh, and give it a little more thought. Because it seems to me to be a no-brainer, but, uh, there must be something here. I- i- it would be an obvious route to take. Uh, with attainable, unless I'm missing something here, but that's why I say I must be sleepy. Um, but is, is that, is that, uh, the, the sort of the, the direction here, uh, Colin? That it is a great deal for, for Boynton based on the statistics?
Right, this is a big deal for Boynton if we want to grow our workforce and grow our wealth as we do need to, uh, grow our housing stock. There are many, many ideas out there and, uh, you know, we, i- if it's the commission's desire to do a workshop, we're perfectly willing to do that. Uh, you know, we, we brought forward tonight a couple of ideas that we could pretty quickly change and put into place, which we think will help. It's not the end. It's barely scratching the surface of the It's barely scratching the surface of the beginning. But we we do know that what we have right now is not working. So our recommendations, our immediate recommendations are to try to fix what is not working, which is changing it to the Boynton Beach income levels and making some changes in the number, in the actual numbers that developers have to use to take advantage of it that we think will incentivize them to use it after talking to them, meeting with them. So that's the quick hits. We've already made a couple of other quick hits. The long term discussion is, you're absolutely right, there's a lot of ideas out there and we really need to get feedback on what those are. And and it is late. So that's really is a workshop setting where we can kind of just sit and talk about the ideas and really get the feedback and and hear from everyone.
Yeah, I certainly would like for you to bring it back and and have it a little bit earlier on the agenda so we can really sink our teeth and brain into it.
Mayor, I'd be open to a separate workshop. I'm not sure where the others stand, but I'd be open to that.
I mean, I don't know what, for myself, I've already said everything that I need to say, bring it all back. So.
Okay.
If you guys want to discuss more.
Well, I I don't necessarily have to have a workshop, even though I wouldn't fight against it, but I don't think I need one. I just need some more insight and and information here and a little more time to digest what Amanda and Colin has shared with us tonight. So I like to just take it and just read it and do my own research and and then they bring bring it back.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Yes, so I I definitely hear the sentiment of my colleagues and I understand that, you know, it is late. I'm tired, just like everybody else. But this has been something that's been kind of on the docket for for quite a while. And being that staff is proposing, these are changes that can go into effect immediately. As we've noticed, there have been, there has been a lot of interest in development and redevelopment within the city. So if if these changes as staff has proposed them would only help incentivize our existing ordinance for affordable, attainable, or whatever you want to call it, housing, that I'm not opposed to putting those into the, you know, into the works. And and of course, we can continue to discuss and continue to, you know, further elaborate at a later time based on what Vice Mayor and Commissioner Hay are are saying. But if 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 this is something that, you know, it just requires a quick vote, that we can at least just change the language to start, you know, to to allow for any future applicants to to be able to to take advantage of this. I I would be in favor of that because again, my thing is it it pains me when I see, you know, a new development comes through and because we didn't have an ordinance or whatever in place, they're grandfathered into whatever we had previously and there's nothing we can do, there's no recourse. And there's another opportunity lost for creating more affordable housing, especially within the downtown area. So that's where I stand. And and so I would be in favor of moving this forward tonight. And then anything else or any other additions that my colleagues would like to make to improve this document, then of course, we can do that at a later time. But that's that's where I stand. Thank you.
Colin, do we need a an ordinance so there will be two readings to make any changes permanent?
Yes, absolutely. This is just getting some direction tonight. And 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 like I said, the quick hits, we can bring those back in ordinances and everybody will have time to digest it. We'll meet individually with you all on those particular changes. And we do want to continue the dialogue because there's other ideas out there that we need to work on. But we we need feedback to to know which ideas you like and which ideas you don't like. And so it's a continuing process. It's taking care of some problems we know we have now. And then moving forward is is going out there and finding every idea that's out there and figuring out which ones work for Boynton Beach. And in and in trying them and seeing if we can do it because it is a big problem and he's, we need to solve it. So we need to not stop until we fixed it.
Mayor, as we bring back the the draft ordinances for your consideration, we will also bring back a list of what Colin is referring to as as ideas and other other considerations and kind of break this down a little bit so it's a little more manageable of a discussion. But we're we're gonna be talking at least over the next, you know, probably two or three meetings. Well, it may take a meeting or so to put this together, but then I see us having a few discussions about it. And we'll just continue as we break through, you know, drill down through it.
Mayor, yes, if I may clarify and update my position. As it relates to the current proposed revisions that staff has provided, I I'm in favor of it. What I was thinking more so about when I said we may need a workshop is when it comes to ideas that offer alternative forms of housing, I know that can be very controversial, accessory dwelling units. It was a massive issue in Lake Worth. And so, you know, those were the kind of ideas that I was thinking about in terms of having a longer conversation. Container homes, we need to learn more about them and other forms of housing to cater specifically to the lower end brackets, the 37% that Amanda brought up. So so if you want to just push forward with the current proposals and then we'll, you know, get our ordinance back, happy to support that, but it's it's those novel forms of housing that's that's caught my attention.
Does anyone else on the commission feel that way? I mean, for me, it's, you know, regarding the the modular homes, container homes, the accessory dwelling units, you know, the the issues is that we have those already here in our city. And it's trying to get back to that point where you're having the certain amount of land on, let's say, a sixth of an acre, which is 7,500 square feet. You have a third, you know, let's say a 1,500 square foot home. You could easily put in another 1,000 square feet and be under the 40% limit. And so that's kind of where the accessory dwelling unit, like Lake Worth, they have very small homes and very small lots with no driveways. And so putting in the accessory dwelling units is not going to be for every single family home lot. I think it's that, you know, the the people that have that at least, you know, we keep our certain minimums that the properties no more, the improvement on the properties, no more than 40% of the land value because we want to make sure that the property is holding all of its water as well. There's the driving driveway issue as as well. And so I'd like to see what the city comes up with to those issues before saying we don't want to discuss it or wait for the the staff. So let's hear what staff has to say, what they would want in the city. And so we can be it more on the restrictive where it's like, you know, it's only, you know, you have to have at least a sixth of an acre, which is, I believe, 7,500 square feet before you can get the accessory dwelling unit. So it's not meant for the the lots that are even smaller than that, like 5,000 square feet.
I just feel that I I think that Colin and and Amanda would be in a better position to explain to us what we really voted on, say, at the next meeting, if that's possible. So because right now it it's kind of vague what would be approved. And so I want to be clear. So if it it we've been without it this for thus far. So I don't I don't see a need to rush it. I think next meeting, they will be a better position to tell us basically what it is that we can latch on to right now and what is it that we need further study on. So that's basically where I am.
So, you know, Colin, can I ask, or Lori, what is the the game plan? You know, I feel let's come back with the the first reading of the ordinance. And that way, if there's any changes that we need to make to it, we can make it there rather than review a little bit more of what we would want in the first ordinance, review the first ordinance, and then move on to the second. So I'd say let's put in an extra meeting between the first and the second ordinance rather than having an extra meeting in before the first ordinance. So that way we get exactly what the language that the city wants to put in. And that's how we make the changes rather than the conceptual language.
Fine with me.
Colin, do you understand the direction?
Yes. And and yes, that's all we needed tonight was some direction. And I think we have some direction and it will be a continuing conversation looking at a lot of different options and a lot of different housing types. And and feel free, we will meet individually with any commissioner also that would like to. If if you have some individual ideas you want to discuss, we'd love to to discuss those two and then bring them back to the whole commission.
Excellent. All right.
Mayor? Yes, Commissioner Katz.
Just a final comment for the for the conversation. Thank you for giving me the opportunity there. I I do agree that some of the topics, specifically for me, and the only one for me that I would want to have further discussion on is the accessory dwelling just because as as Vice Mayor Pensilera pointed out, that Lake Worth, and as as you pointed out, it's not an apples to apples comparison, but Lake Worth had some serious concerns. So I I won't necessarily stand in the way of it, but I I wouldn't want to see an ordinance where there were multiple ideas and we would be forced to vote on an ordinance all at once. And maybe you don't like one of the ideas and, you know, now you have to vote down a whole ordinance because one out of four or five ideas wasn't synced up with anyone's view. That's my concern about the accessory dwelling one. I just want to make sure that we look at this piecemeal before we get to a vote on a whole package so that we can build consensus on the specifics. And hopefully the final package is amenable to everybody. Thank you.
Now we got two items under legal, proposed ordinance number 21-001 and 21-002. Jim?
Ordinance 21-001, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of a 12-foot wide water sewer easement in conflict with scheduled cafeteria expansion plans at Citrus Cove Elementary School located at 8,400 Lawrence Road, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
All right, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Saying none. Do we want to, does the commission want a presentation or we are okay with the discussion?
We're good.
Description. All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hay?
Hi.
Commissioner Romulus?
Hi.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensilera?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Lotus Five-O.
21-002, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of a 10-foot wide water easement in conflict with scheduled cafeteria expansion plans at Citrus Cove Elementary School located at 8,400 Lawrence Road, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Saying no further discussion. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Hi.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensilera?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Hi.
Lotus Five-O.
Thank you. So the future agenda items that we agreed on was a discussion on feeding South Florida a presentation for a day of service for the city. Discussion on community policing when we we discuss gatherings, whether it's a protest or in our parks. And then one thing that I'd like to to get an update on is the the voluntary sustainability payment. When do we feel like we're going to get that back to us as a board?
Is this the water bill idea?
Yes. Is it gonna be in April? Or that's that's when I'd hopefully get an idea of how long.
Right. Mayor Colin Graff, yeah, we're we're still making sure we can do it on the bill and and make it work. We will bring it back as soon as we have, we don't want to bring you something that doesn't work. So as soon as we determine that we can get it on a bill, we'll bring it back to you.
You mean, are we still trying to figure out there's space on our?
Not space. This is this, this is a technical issue. April's probably a good timeframe.
Okay, thank you. All right. And Yuri, do you mind providing us with the closing?
Mayor, before you, before you end, Mayor, we had one add on item, which is a request for a closed door session.
I did say that at the very beginning.
Okay, well, this is my request pursuant to statute for a closed door session on the Brandon Breskia plaintiff case versus city of Boynton Beach. It's pending in Palm Beach County Circuit Court. I need about 45 minutes of your collective time, hopefully sometime before, during, or after the next city commission meeting.
So we got no comments. I think 4:30 was a little bit too early for me, so I would prefer afterwards.
Well.
By afterwards, you mean after the meeting?
Yeah.
I I'm, I would not like that.
What is the earliest that you can make it, Mayor?
Well, if he needs 45 minutes, that's 4:45. So if that's what, you know, I may be a little late because I have work to do. But up to y'all.
Well, right now it's 9:13 and we're gonna have a meeting after it would be very late.
Hey.
I would prefer not to, but I would work with the majority.
That's in or Vice Mayor?
So if we use today as an example, I think you missed maybe 10:15. Or is this likely to be the situation moving forward?
Yeah, the the question is, is that it's either after the meeting or before the meeting. What do you prefer?
I prefer before.
Okay, we have it before the meeting at 4:45 on January 2nd. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now Yuri.
February 2nd, Mayor.
What did I say?
You said January. I'm just for the record, February 2nd, we all know that.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted the record to reflect it properly.
Thank you. All right, Yuri?
Okay, as a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the Boynton, to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach commission meeting. Be safe and have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.